Good evening, everyone. Today is December 1st, 2020. This is the Town of Situate Select Board Meeting. And we are meeting in response to Governor Baker's Public Declaration of Health Emergency and Related Emergency Executive Order dated March 12th of this year. The Town of Situate Public Meetings will be held remotely until further notice. The meeting is being recorded and can be viewed live on Situate Community Television, or you can go to the, obviously, everyone who's on this web call has already found the Zoom link on the Town of Situate website calendar under Agendas for the Board of Selectmen. With those notices, when we get to public comment periods, we will, the board will have a discussion, and then we will open for a question and answer period, and you will be asked to raise hand, which is a function under Participants, and we will call on you. So with that, I'd like to ask for an acceptance of agenda motion, please.
So moved.
So by Ms. Connolly, seconded by Ms. Curran, because we are vote. All votes will need to be taken by roll call, so.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion here is 5-0. Before we get on with the whole meeting, just a couple of things I just wanted to highlight. We will not, on the agenda, we, at 8:10, we had an update for water and sewer projects, which is, the board has asked these, the DPW Director to do on a quarterly basis. There was a family emergency for some of the participants of that conversation, so we will not be discussing water updates today. If that's what you're signing in to listen to, we will have a sewer project update. So I want you guys to know that upfront. I also want to alert everyone that, you know, especially in this COVID time, if you would like your children to get a call from Santa Claus this year, the Recreation Department is coordinating that, and you can find the information on their Facebook page or the town website as well. So that's very exciting. And, and I really want the, and the board joins me with this, acknowledge the fact that a intrepid volunteer from our town, 30 years of service to the Situate Historical Society, has stepped down as their long-term president, and I want to just congratulate Mr. Dave Ball for all of his service to our community and thank him for that. So those were my quick little announcements, and I will open up for any Zoom-ins or walk-ins. If anyone that is wanting to participate could use the raise hand function or turn off your video and physically raise your hand, we will invite you to address the board. And I'm scrolling through the participants, and I, I don't see any Zoom-ins. So, okay. Then with that, I will turn the meeting over to Mr. Jim Bedrow for the Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you. Let's start with our COVID update. Yesterday morning, from Monday to Monday, we had 23 new cases in Situate, which was down from 25 the previous week. Yesterday, we had three new cases. Today, we had four new cases. So our numbers continue to go up. Almost all the cases yesterday and today were new addresses. I think there was one repeat address, and the other six were new addresses. So the virus is still here in Situate. We are still yellow on the state COVID map. That's every Thursday they update that. We're at 2.77% positivity rating over the last 14 days, which is up slightly from 2.72% the previous week. We want to remind people, if you traveled during Thanksgiving holidays, be aware that you are subject to travel restrictions on returning to Situate if you went out of state. The only low-risk state that you can travel to and not have to quarantine upon return is Hawaii. But if you go to Hawaii, you have to quarantine for 14 days when you go there. So I don't think a lot of people are flying out there and back. So if you went to New England states, you went to New York, you went out of state to visit, you are subject to the quarantine requirements returning back to the state. It is 14 days or having a positive COVID test administered within 72 hours prior to return to Massachusetts. All the restrictions are available on mass.gov, but if you did travel out of state, we do expect you and hope that you would follow those restrictions, particularly given the way the numbers are rising in Situate and the Commonwealth and across the country. We've said it a couple of times. We're at a crucial stage right now. The numbers are going up significantly all over the country. The vaccine is on the horizon. We can see it. The CDC voted today that healthcare workers and residents of long-term care facilities would be the first ones to get the vaccine. After that, it'll be first responders and people with pre-existing conditions. But, you know, we need people to obey the mask mandates. We need people to do the separation. We need you to not have large gatherings and large crowds. We don't want to shut anything down. We don't want the schools to have to go all remote, but that decision is going to be made by whether or not people in Situate do what they have to do to keep these numbers down. So we'll monitor them. We meet on a weekly basis with, with our COVID team to go over them. Right now, we are staying the course, but we will maintain these, these reviews on almost a daily basis to see where we're going and if we need to do more to protect the residents and the employees of the town. The ban on watering is now at moderate as opposed to severe. We got a lot of rain yesterday. The reservoir was at 44% before that. So after yesterday's, we should be close to half-full now on the reservoir. The water usage continues to go down slightly. We're still about 450,000 gallons a day through the plant, which is about normal for this time of year. Remind people that we are doing seasonal shut-offs. There are no contact shut-offs. Go to the town website and go to the Water Department page. There's a form you fill out, and they will come out and shut off your water. We are employing right now A and B teams in the Water Department to ensure that our operators do not cross-contaminate each other, and we always have enough people with the correct licenses to run the plant. You'll notice you got a Cold Park Way. The fencing's up for the new project that we're doing, the Marina Piling Project. Contract will be using that as a staging area. He'll be starting to bring stuff in over the next several days and weeks and commence that project probably sometime late December, beginning of January. That will put that marina on pilings, which is a much better situation for us. It'll mirror what we did over at the Maritime Center. So people will see that project starting very shortly. Cedar Point is continuing to work. The laterals on Rebecca have been finished, and the contractor has now moved over to Lighthouse to do those laterals. This will change the traffic patterns and the walking patterns, so please pay attention to the signs and the detail offices. The first shipment of the manhole covers have come in. These are specially designed to prevent inflow into the system. With those arriving, we do expect within the next two weeks that the contractor will bring the large excavator in and start digging the main trench for the installation of the saw line. This will be very disruptive out there. It's going to be a 10 to 12-foot wide trench. It will cause stoppages in traffic. It will cause disruption for people getting in and out of there. We will let you know when that's going to happen, but just a heads up, that excavator will be coming, and when they're working in the neck, there will be times where you will not be able to get back and forth out to Cedar Point. Just, there's no way around it. We're going to dig up that whole area, but we will let the residents know and give them notice for those that need to get in and out. We'll be able to do so before the world gets closed and the excavation starts. Finally, I had the opportunity today to go to the new Lawson Green Senior Project up by the library. Very impressive. I think the residents who are fortunate enough to get a chance to live there are going to be very happy with it. The rooms are very nice. The facility's going to be beautiful. It's a great spot next to the library, near the new Council on Aging. Scheduled for occupancy mid-January, beginning of February, depending upon what happens with some of the supplies and the contract, but they are on schedule right now. And I just want to say they were effusive in their praise for the town employees that they've been dealing with, particularly the local inspectors, building, water, electrical, plumbing, complimenting them on their professionalism, their knowledge, and really the ease that they've been able to work with them and how well they work with the contractors and the local inspectors. So I want to thank those town employees who have been the face of the town on that project for being such a good representative of the town and the Town of Situate employees. It's really, I think, when you see that project, I think the town's going to be very, very happy that we supported that and that we got it built. So if someone gets a chance to go up there, take a look, but it's going to be a great project. That's what I have for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Bedrow. And just to piggyback on the Lawson Green, yeah, I got the tour today, and it's, it's a wonderful site. It really is creating this sort of, you know, campus where we have some senior housing within spitting distance of the new Senior Center and the library. So it's, it's great. So, but I do want to just give a shout out to Board Member Curran, who was our face on that process, and thank you for her work on that, on that project. So, thank you, Mara.
You're welcome. It was a great tour.
It was a good tour. Great. Well, we will launch, we're going to, we're going to try to be very prompt because we do have a public hearing at 7 o'clock, and we have two interviews scheduled prior to the 7 o'clock. The first is for Veteran Services and Mr. McLean, and the second was supposed to be Cultural Council. That applicant has, has asked to be removed for consideration, and we're going to bump Ms. Hayes up to that because she has another obligation at 7 o'clock. So, Mr. McLean, I think you're unmuted, and we've kind of met you already because you've been appointed as the Planning Board alternate. Your, thank you for continued service and interest in serving the town, and you're interested in the Veteran Services Advisory Council. Melanie, it's late at night for me. So tell us why you are interested in doing that and how you think you can support their work.
Well, I'm a veteran myself, and my wife and I moved to Situate a couple of years ago to start a family and raise our family here. And I believe in, it's my civic duty to try to improve the town in any way that I can. So joining the Planning Board and also the Veterans Committee, it seems like a good place.
Great. I'm going to open it up to the board. I know that there, I'm sure I have a couple of questions for you, but thank you so much for, for your, your commitment. We appreciate it. Is there somebody on the board that would like to ask a question first? Looking at my little boxes. Mr. Vignani?
Just a quick question. Have you been to any of the meetings? Or is there anything you've seen them doing or, or interests or thoughts that you're having about the committee in general? I guess that's two questions.
Yes, I've been to three meetings to observe thus far, and I've, it's been interesting just learning about what they're doing, working to get veterans to interact with other veterans in town as there are a lot through a number of different wartime periods from Korea all the way up to post 9/11. And so some of the things that we've been working on, like Reets Across America and getting the honor seat installed, been interesting. And then also working on getting, knock on wood, getting a kind of a, like a barbecue get-together next summer. So there's some of the things that we've been working on. But that's for, I guess, like, for public facing. Some of the internal stuff that we're working on is getting veterans better access to healthcare appointments if they are unable to get themselves healthcare appointments and telehealth is not available. So working on some of the stuff behind the scenes too.
Great.
With the Veterans Coordinator and the rest of the committee.
Great. Well, I, just a quick comment. I like the way that you say "we," like you're already part of it, and you are regardless of whether you're put on the committee or not. I, I like the fact that you're participating and engaging now, so thank you for, for that.
Thank you.
There are other questions from the board? Yep, Ms. Connolly, and then Mr. Goodrich?
Yes, um, thank you for applying for the position. My question is, a lot of us seem to view veterans as being, you know, old guys, and you seem to be a younger guy. And I know that there are women veterans now. Are we doing a good job as a town, or could we do better? I guess what I'm asking is in reaching out to the people in your age group and reaching out to women?
I'd have to, I don't have a good, firm grasp of that yet. I think that the Veterans Committee is making an effort to, to do the outreach. Our population can be kind of ornery. But that, I think, getting into post 9/11 veterans and women veterans, work on the board and have a, I guess, a more 9/11 face to it to help with the outreach. Because I know a few that I kind of want to track back in to get involved. And some takes a little bit of work, but.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Goodrich?
I, Karen, she stole my, my questions about intergenerational connection. But first of all, thank you for your, for your service, and it's great to hear that you're already thinking about some of those, and actually, and those of us on the board, thinking about that connecting folks. So again, just, just thank you.
Great. Yeah, so Mara, did you want to add anything, or?
No, just, you know, thank you for coming forward, you know, being on the Planning Board and also serving on this committee is, is a big-time commitment. And I know you came highly recommended from folks for this committee as well, so I appreciate it. You obviously have a nice sense of civic duty, obviously, with your, your dedication to the country as well. But I think you'll be a great asset. I think to Karen's point and even to yours, you know, having your generation and younger start to be more involved will help to, you know, create better, deeper connections for the years going forward too. So thanks so much for coming forward.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you both. So we typically, we will do the interviews during the course of the meeting, and then, and under new businesses, sort of toward the end of the meeting, we will review candidates and take votes, and, and then Lorraine will reach out to let folks know when those decisions are made. But yes, again, thank you for your service to the town. And, you know, this committee has really sort of reinvented itself in the last year or so, and it's really robust. So seeing great folks like you come forward is really, is really, it just feeds into, into the success they've already been having. So thank you for coming tonight, and we will, and, and we're going to move on to our other interviews unless you have any questions for the board.
No, ma'am. Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks so much. Talk to you soon.
Thank you.
All right. That leads us to Ms. Linda Hayes, well-known to us as Director of our Council on Aging. We, she's an applicant for the Advisory Committee on Equity and Justice for All. We have one open position, which is to be filled by a town employee, and we have three applications for that. We'll listen, we'll, we'll meet, we'll discuss that with Linda now, and then the others two after our public hearings that are coming up next. But as I said, Linda has to go and do other town services after this. So Linda, how are you?
I'm great. How are you all? Good to see you.
Obviously, we all know you well, but this is a whole new role, and we'd like to know why you are interested in serving and how you think you can help this, this new committee.
Well, when I saw it become available, it just seemed an opportunity for me, not living in Situate at this time. You know, I might have even been interested in the committee itself. So it was, it was a nice opportunity, I guess, to, to maybe be part of something and a great effort for the town, but also, you know, just to be involved and to try to give back and do something about this. During the spring and summer, when some of the activities were happening, I had a weekly discussion group with some of the seniors, and all of us talked about that and wanting to figure out what we could do, if there was anything that we could do. So I hadn't come up with that yet, and this just seems like a, a great, a great way to do something and be part of it and contribute any way I can. I do feel like I don't know if my background is completely applicable, but between the work that I do and also maybe my past work with education and I had been part of or have received the leadership, the MMA Leadership Certificate, so I went through that program, and I just think maybe this is a nice way to utilize that as well.
Great, thank you. I open up to the board. Are there questions for Linda? Ms. Curran? I think you're muted, Mara.
Sorry. Do we have the, the list of, hey, Linda, thanks for coming forward. You know, we asked everybody else kind of a standard list of questions, right? So I don't have that in front of me, but I, I know one of them, Linda, was, you know, what your feeling is of the makeup of the committee, and do you think we have the appropriate folks that, to make up the committee? I mean, knowing that the, the town, we kind of went back and forth, you know, the role that the town employee representatives should play and whether or not, you know, it would be independent or voting, and, you know, what are your thoughts as to the type of role as a town employee you would feel most comfortable representing or playing on this committee?
I mean, I think advisory is, is warranted. I think that's enough. It doesn't need to be a voting position. I think providing the information that informs certain decisions that they might make or at least being able to contribute through the events that they are holding. And, and actually bringing, if it's, if it comes to that, the town employees themselves and making them aware of what's being done in the community that they work for, I think that's a good role. So I, I like that. The liaison part of it is, would be nice. I think it's, would be effective and substantial.
And then my second question would be, with the new Senior Center, lots of, right? Opening up kind of at the same time that this is going to get kicked off, you know, what do you think your bandwidth will be?
Well, I guess, I, I guess that sort of remains to be seen, but actually, I've been wondering what I will do with myself after the building project is complete, because that has been pretty time-consuming. So I imagine I will have at least one night a week, if not my weekends available for events. And, you know, it's, it's sort of what we do anyway with the Senior Center. It's kind of a constant. It's really not just relegated to the day-to-day, Monday through Friday of the week. We're always thinking of ways to connect and be out in the community or, or make the community more aware of what we're doing or provide opportunities for the seniors. So I just see it as an extension, I guess, of that. So I can get on the treadmill.
Okay. Thanks.
Questions, other questions from the board? Mr. Vignani?
Hi, Linda. Thanks for, for throwing your hat in the ring. This is another one of those, actually, really tough ones where we have a bunch of great candidates, and you certainly would do a great job. I mean, you bring such, you know, commitment and passion to, to everything that I've seen you involved in. And I really like the connection. You know, we've got people that have kind of a connection to, to children, and I like the connection that you have to seniors and their aspects and their, their take on this as well. So I think you'd, you'd bring a whole new perspective there. You know, I think one of the questions I have is, is there, well, I guess there's a, you know, you've been an employee for a long time, so you've also got a lot of sense of what goes on in the town in general and maybe have a, a good idea how the interaction is right now. So I think you bring that to, to the table as well. Is there any specific reason or any specific, you know, passion that's getting you involved in this? This is clearly a, you know, a very, you know, intense issue right now. You know, is there?
Yeah, if I could jump in, one of the standard questions that Mara referred to is we, we asked the other candidates, why do you think this work is important? And I think that's the same, yeah.
Okay. I think it's, it's a topic that, you know, I was moved certainly to see what the community did during the spring and the summer, what the young people did, what some of the older people were able to do. It was distressing and upsetting to see some of the different attitudes that I didn't expect, and I guess I feel that it boils down to education. And I think this is a good way to bring more education to the community. It's like so many things. You just need to get out there and speak about it. But, you know, although I don't have any sort of more personal reasons than just thinking it's extremely important and feel it's, it's just time, I guess, I, I'm surprised to the extent that we may need to re-educate people. I sort of feel like in my own experience that I did not see this coming, so to speak, and maybe we've been more protected. But I, I just think that it's, it's really important. There's, there's lots of things we do for the community, but this one goes so far beyond us that I, I just would want to help. And like I said, even with the seniors, and I had asked a couple of them to write in my newsletter when things were, you know, really becoming heated. And, and they did such a wonderful job expressing themselves that, again, I was just impressed and want to be part of whatever the movement here becomes. And also to advocate for those, you know, who aren't able to do it for themselves, so.
Great. All right. Thank you, Linda. We, we have time for one more question. If there's a, if someone on the board has another question? No? All right. Well, I know you've got the scurry off to your next Zoom.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you, Linda. Your willingness to help with this.
Pleasure.
Okay. We have in, well, it's 6:58. We are ahead. There is a 7:00 PM public hearing discussion vote on a poll petition on Henry Turner Bailey Road. Mr. Cafferty is unavailable this evening, so we will be having the representative, I'm sorry, I know the name changed and I forgot to write it down. Do we?
Ryan Moscos.
Ryan Moscos. Sorry, Ryan. I knew that it was Ryan. Will be presenting to us from National Grid.
And we have Jeff Chessia on the line, representing DPW.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff Chessia. Okay. So, do we have to wait one minute, or can we get started?
I'm just looking for Jeff's phone number here.
Okay.
I'm going to run across the hall.
Jeff, if you can raise hand on the, oh, I guess if you're on a call, you can't do that, can you?
I did unmute both the phone calls, so.
Okay. Jeff, say hello if you're one of these.
Hi, my name is Jeffrey Chessia. I'm with the Engineering DPW Department.
Okay. So it's 036.
You're good.
Okay. So the board, okay, the board has received the backup on this. This is to, to add a new poll close to 3A on, trying to find the map myself, close to 3A on Henry Turner Bailey. So Ryan or Jeff, which, who would like to run us through the proposal?
I mean, I can start if you'd like.
Okay. Thanks, Jeff.
All right. So I went out and looked at the site, and they're proposing to put a poll near an existing poll about 20 feet away, and it is on the southern side of Henry Turner Bailey Road near a electric substation. And I went to the different departments within DPW to see if any utilities were in conflict with it, and there isn't any. So from the DPW standard, point of view, there's, there's no conflict. The only issue is, is there is a resident who lives nearby who has a 15-foot right-of-way, so he just needs to make sure when he puts his pole in, it's not within his area of which he can access his property.
Okay. So I don't know if everyone can, I shared screen the, the map of this. Is it the red pole? Is that where the new one's, that's the one proposed? And then the resident is, has the access here? And is there an existing pole there already?
There is an existing pole on the corner of his, one side of his property already. It's off his property, so it's, it's the, yep.
Mr. Moscos, do you want to add to, to those comments? Trying to find you.
We may have lost him. I think he may have just called in. Hold on there.
Oh, okay. Hold on. Ryan, are you?
You got him?
Yes.
Hi. So again, your name is Ryan Moscos. I'm here on behalf of National Grid to discuss the pole installation for the Massachusetts Grid Monetization Program. So basically, the whole point of the grid monetization program is to install smart monitors on the poles so National Grid can monitor the heater's performance. These monitors allow them access to real-time data as well as outage and restoration notification. So typically, this equipment is required to be installed right outside the substation, which in this case it is. The substation's right, right before where the proposed pole is supposed to be installed. So basically, a new pole for this location is required in this instance because the monitors can't be installed on existing poles that have a, have switch, existing equipment on it, such as switching devices, and they also can't be installed on jump-in poles. So we're kind of forced to, or we're kind of need to have of forced to, or we're kind of need to have a new pole installation at this location.
Okay. I'm gonna stop sharing just to see everyone. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah. So when I was talking to Jeff earlier, as you can see from the sketches that he put up earlier, the existing pole, the proposed pole is roughly 20, 23 to 20 feet away. I know that the resident that had the concern has a 15-foot opening to his property. So I don't see much disturbance to his, for his access. But in the case that if it is in the interrupting his access, I think we do have a couple more feet that the pole could be relocated more towards the substation. But I don't really see an issue access-wise, really.
Okay. I think that there's some questions from the board. I'd like to open it up, because I know there's some issues on the placement. Does anyone have any questions for either Jeff or Ryan? No?
I can ask.
Ms. Curran.
Sorry, my view isn't up completely. Ken, I just want to make sure that, A, that the residents' concerns will be addressed, because you sort of said that you didn't think it really needed to, but it could be moved a little bit further away. So I guess I would suggest that we just do that to make sure that we're not, you know, blocking his access at all there. So in that right of way. And then, secondly, when you say monitoring devices, can you clarify that a little bit? I, you know, I did see Verizon listed also on the application. And what relationship will Verizon have with National Grid with regards to the type of equipment that will go on this pole?
Yeah, so.
Hold on.
This pole.
Sorry, can you start over? I think you were hiccuping there.
Yeah, sorry. My service is the best here. But so basically, the existing poles that, so the pole 14-1, which is the existing one that's roughly 20 feet away from the closed one, that has a, has a switch, switching device on it. So because that has a switching device, we can install the smart monitors on that existing pole. And then the next pole down from that is pole 13. That has a load brake on it, which is another switching device. So we're not able to install the smart monitors on that pole. And then the next pole is a junction pole, which then goes down to Gannett, past your lane. And that is where the first transformer is. So we're kind of only, we're kind of stuck within this minimal area of being on this pole. And it would be, I think the proposed pole is actually a solar pole. So Verizon's not going to be involved in this.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Does the board have any other questions about this proposal? Mr. Vignani?
Just to kind of piggyback on Mara's question, what are you monitoring?
I'm sorry, you kind of went in and out on that.
Sure.
Would you be able to repeat that?
Yeah. What are you monitoring?
So we're monitoring the feeder's performance. So obviously, when the feeders all come out of the substation, so if the feeder is performing poorly, then they will have that live data access. And then they can make the adjustments to bring that, to make that feeder perform better.
And you have to put that, you have to put a whole new pole in to get some device that's going to tell you whether the feeder at the junction box is, you can't put the monitoring device at the junction box?
No. So these, these smart monitors monitor the whole feeder. So in this, this case, this feeder actually goes in two different directions. So we're replacing pole 16, which is towards, I don't know which street it is, whatever that main road is, we're, yeah, right over there. We're replacing pole 16, because we're able, that has no, so there'll be once, there'll be one smart monitor. And then because the feeder goes in two different directions, that's why we're, we're in need to propose a new installation pole at the point that we are trying to propose.
Yeah. I mean, I think our goal is to put all this stuff underground, not add more poles. I don't know, is there any?
Yeah. Yeah. So these smart monitors are, they're only, it's more of a, I guess it's like a testing program, but they're all on overhead. None of these are underground. So they're usually installed, rather than having like the normal inflators on top of the pole, they have these smart monitors, which are a little more bulkier, but they allow them to access to real life, real-time data.
So how big exactly is that actual monitor? When you, we see the pole and we look up the pole, how big is the unit itself?
The monitor itself?
Yeah.
I believe that they're like 30 inches. So I mean, it's gonna be, they're on, they'll be on very, the very top of the pole and the crossarms. So I mean, it's not really gonna, it wouldn't affect anything, really. There's not gonna be much of a difference from the existing pole that you look at and a monitor pole.
Okay. Does the board have any more questions? Otherwise, I know that, Ms. Conley?
Just, just one more. So is this the first one of these types of monitors that's being installed in Situate?
To be honest, I don't have the answer to that. We have so many of these. I would imagine it's not the only place in Situate. This is the only, the only location that I've worked on in Situate. But I've, they're being placed kind of everywhere around Massachusetts, because this is a new program that they're trying to do to make sure that they are able to identify poor working feet.
Right. Well, I guess, I guess that goes to my question overall. Are we going to see a lot more of these types of petitions to put up even more poles around town, if this is a new program?
Kind of similar question. I don't really have the answers to that, really. It's really what, it's all on National Grid, one what they're trying to form. I think that they have, they might have a list of previous poor working feeders. So that's what they're probably working on first. I know that we, us specifically, we are, there are more, more of these grid mods locations coming in. So I would imagine that you might see more around, around the town.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Right. Mr. Goodrich?
I mean, I'm just, I'm looking at this on Google Maps. I mean, it's already, I mean, aesthetically, the area is already full with other poles. I'm trying to find exactly where it might be. But I'm much less concerned when you look at it, not on the overhead map, but kind of where you are. And these, to my knowledge, are more about energy efficiency and, and hopefully trying to create more of a smart grid, which should help us all.
Correct.
I don't know.
Yeah. If you, if you, if you look on the existing, on the existing Google, you'll see that leading up to Gannett, like your, or your road or lane, leading up to that, that side street, they all have equipment on them. So that's why, that is why that we are forced to, or why we are proposing that location that we are.
That's all right.
Where, so in relation, it's right near that station that?
Yeah, it's a great.
Yeah. So basically, if you looked at like that, on the, kind of with the, let's see that, the sticker tree, maybe a little bit to the left, it's kind of be, kind of lined up somewhat with that, that tree. It's usually, it's about 23 feet from that, that existing pole. It's actually, it's probably about three feet off of the, the edge of the pavement, leading to the substation.
Okay.
It's about three, three to four feet off of that. So about lined up right where that cursor is.
Okay. And where is that relative to the?
The street.
Where is that relevant to the access to the, the resident, the front edge, the street?
When I, when I was talking to Jeff about this, he mentioned that if you're looking at that existing pole, there's a rock wall there. I guess it's somewhere, its access is somewhere between, around that rock wall area. So I'm assuming it's actually a little bit to the left of the rock wall. So I mean, I meant it out of 20 to 23 feet in between both the new pole and the existing pole. So I, I think that we should have enough, that the guy should have enough room for access wise, if it's 15-foot access wise. So I don't really see big issues with it. I just, my main concern was just trying to keep it, I mean, we could have the room to push it over a little bit. But I wanted to obviously keep it away from the paved road as much as possible for trying to pull it in there and such.
I know that said, said resident is, is one of our boxes right now. If the board doesn't have any other questions, I'd like to open it up to the public. Does the board have any other questions on this matter? Okay. Then I'd like to open it up. We do have another public hearing that's scheduled after this. So I want to try to be mindful of our time. Mr. Friling, I'm assuming you're here for this. Wait, let us, let us invite you in. All right. Hello, Mr. Friling. How are you?
Oh, fine. Thank you. Thank, thank you to the board to allowing me to speak.
Yes. Well, we, we're talking about putting a pole right at the entrance to your property. Would you like to provide us with some information?
Yes. I met with Jeff this afternoon, and I have no problem with the pole. I, but I do have a problem if it blocks my 15, my access to the, to, there's a couple of acres on the other side of Baum Brook there, right, right behind the pole. And if I could get together with this Ryan Moskos, and maybe an engineer's from National Grid, maybe we can make absolutely sure that that new pole is not going to block, block my, my access.
Great.
If they could put it closer to the transformer, and off the street as he said he, they wanted, I think that would be fine. But if we could, I mean, I've got my deed and my, my, my map here, and it, we could, with an engineer, I'm not an engineer, we could figure it exactly where the 15 feet is.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be more than happy to, if you would like to meet with Jeff and I, I'd be more than happy to go to that location, figure out where your access really is. And then we can try to figure out where the new pole can be placed.
Okay. All right. Yeah.
I'd be able to, I'd be able to talk if you'd like.
Sure. I'm available when you and Jeff are, so, you know.
Okay.
Do you want my cell number, Ryan?
But, you know, we can coordinate that through, through the selectmen, select boards.
Yeah. I can email that to them.
Yeah.
Because I, I have your number, Mr. Friling.
Okay.
You have your number.
That makes me nervous. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Great. All right, great. Okay, we will, we will make that connection. Should, should the board approve this, we'll make sure that that conversation happens. I do want to see if there's anyone else. This is a public hearing purposes, so that anyone who has a comment about it can do so.
But you're not vote, are you voting now to accept it relative to us, Jeff and I and Ryan getting together?
What we will do is we will listen to all the public comments, and then, then one of the board members will make a move, a motion on, on the terms on which we may or may not accept this. And then we will vote. But I would imagine that, given Ms. Curran's comments, and my inclination is that we will make a provisional acceptance on your, but I can't, I can't promise you that until we have that discussion of vote.
Okay.
Which we'll do now. I do want to open it up. If there are any other butters or anyone interested in this topic, if you can go to participants at the bottom and raise hand, or take your video off so we can see you. I'm not seeing anyone else who wishes to speak on this matter. So I will turn it back to the board to see if there's any further discussion you'd like to make, or if someone is inclined to make a motion on this matter. Sorry, I've got. Board? Sorry. This, we've got too many screens going on here.
I can make a motion if you'd like.
That would be wonderful, Ms. Curran.
Move to approve National Grid Plan 29321068 to install a new pole at 14-50 northeast of the intersection of Henry Turner Bailey Road and Chief Justice Cushing Highway on Route 3A, pending a mutual agreement between National Grid and Mr. Friling with regards to the final placement of the pole.
Second. Could I, I do want to have a little discussion on that. Would it be better to say, to ensure that it does not impede his access to his site?
Sure.
Is that acceptable to everyone?
Yeah.
I, I move to amend the motion to say, provided that it provides access to his site.
Second.
Second. Okay. So the, the vote, the amendment has, the motion has been amended and has been seconded. I think technically, Robert's rules, we have to vote on that. So just for...
I have it.
Mr. Goodrich, is that acceptably following Robert's rules?
I think so. Let's do a new motion.
Okay, do a new motion. That's much easier. Thank you, Mr. Vignani.
Do you want me to read the motion that I have?
Yes, please.
From your conversation. Move to approve National Grid Plan 29321068 to install a new pole 14 to 50 northeast of the intersection of Henry Turner Bailey Road and Chief Justice Cushing Highway, Route 3A, pending a mutual agreement between National Grid and Mr. Friling and the DPW regarding the placement of the pole, so it does not impede access to his property. Motion by Ms. Curran, second by Mr. Goodrich.
Right. Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, then we will go to a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Okay. That's everybody. Okay. So the motion carries 5-0. Lorraine will make sure that all of the parties that need to come to an agreement have contact information. I imagine that'll come tomorrow. And Ryan, last question I should have asked is, when are you looking to actually install this? Do you know?
In terms of construction date, I do not know when they plan on doing this. Yeah, they, they've been, basically, once this stuff gets passed, I know that they're trying to construct things as soon as possible. So I would assume, once that everything is all set, then it'll be working towards trying to get done as soon as possible. But the exact date, I really don't know.
Great. Okay, good. All right. Well, that will conclude the public hearing on this matter. Thank you, everyone, for participating. Thank you, Mr. Friling.
Thank you all very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
That will move us on to the 7:15 public hearing discussion vote, which is regarding tax classification hearing. And Mr. Glowich, our Chair of our Board of Assessors, has been patiently waiting. Apologize for the delay. Where are you?
No problem.
There you are in the box. How are you? The board has received extensive backup, as we do every year on this discussion. But I will turn it over to you to tee it up for us, please.
Yeah, thank you. So Todd Glowick, 75 Turner Road, I'm here representing the Board of Assessors as the acting chair, talk about the possibility of splitting our tax rate. As we know, we have the ability to split it between a commercial and a residential rate. The Board of Assessors has again unanimously voted not to split a tax rate, but to keep the single tax rate at a tax rate, F Y, fiscal year 2021 of 1333. Our reasons for this are the same every year. We just don't have enough of a commercial base to warrant the switch of the tax burden.
Great. And I think, is it, is it 96, is it 96%? Or is, I don't have it in front of me. Sorry, there's too many screens. Are we 96 or 98% residential?
96 residential, 4% commercial.
Okay. And the backup we received compares with other towns who have a split rate, and they are much more substantial, because, and as I understand it, the rationale is to remove some of the residential burden and put it more on the, on the commercial.
Correct.
Lots of do that. And in our town, it really won't make much of an impact. Is that fair?
That is absolutely correct.
All right. I will like to open this up to the board first, to see if they have any comments or concerns about this. This is something we do talk about every year. So. This is something we do talk about every year, so, uh, Mr. Goodrich.
I'm just curious, has any, has any other municipality that you know done the opposite? Split it and actually lowered the commercial base to try to attract new business?
Oh, I, I don't know. It's an interesting question. I don't know if that's, that's something anyone's looked at. That's something we'll take under advisement, definitely.
You know, anytime I see an empty storefront, maybe, I don't know. It's all right, that would be great to, to kind of see if that would be. I don't even know if it's even possible, but I've just got curious. I mean, since it is such a smaller number, 4%, if there's any way we can help our small business, I don't know.
Yeah, I'll definitely take that under advisement, speak to, when the, the rest of the board, see what we can do. It's an interesting question.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goodrich. Uh, any other questions from the board? Comments and innovative ideas? Great, this is also a public hearing, uh, so I will invite anyone who would like to discuss this matter to go to the participants icon and hit raise hand or simply undo your no video. And I will scroll through and see if anyone is, wants to talk about tax classification. Shockingly, no. I do not see anyone there, okay. Um, in that case, uh, it is up to, I would entertain a motion from the board on this matter. Would someone like to do that?
Sure. Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the residential factor according to the Mass General Law Chapter 58 and Section 1A.
Second. Ms. Curran, seconded by Ms. Curran, uh, Conley. Uh, any further comments or questions?
No, just thank you to Joe and the board for all their work on it. I know they do a lot of analysis every year, so, thanks all.
Yeah.
Yep.
Appreciate it, okay. Uh, with that, we will have a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you again for your work and service on this committee and extend our congra, our thanks to the rest of the board.
Thank you for your time.
All right, that concludes the two public hearings. I think that's all we have on public hearings and that brings us back. Although I have to go through all, we have a lot of backup from this, from the work from the assessors. That brings us back to our, um, interviews for boards and committees. We are almost concluded this process for this year. Um, and, uh, thank you to the board and to all the applicants. We have two more, um, two more applicants for the town employee position for Advisory Committee on Equity and Justice for All. And I believe Jody, there's Jody, Jody McDonough will be, um, our first, um, interview. And as you all know, Jody is currently serving as our town archivist and has been around the town business for, well, as long as I have. So, Jody, thank you for stepping up. I, um, Mara did point out and I, I, I was remiss and there were four questions that we did ask all of the other candidates. Um, town employees a little bit different because of the perspective that you're bringing in, knowing how town works. Um, but the first two questions are, you know, why do you think this work is important? And what do you think you can bring to, to, um, to the table to meet the mission of the, of the committee?
Um, good evening, everyone. Um, I guess I, I have a deep interest in this. I've been listening to podcasts and reading stories and reading articles and I, there's no place like your home to start working on things. So that's why I threw my name in the hat. I know Lorraine, I had talked to Lorraine and there wasn't that many people. So I thought, I'm not a person of color, I'm not a minority, I'm not black, so I, you know, but I do have a deep interest and I have been reading a lot about it. So that's my first, that's my, um, perspective. I do have a couple areas that I think we could improve in our town, um, that I would like to forward. So, um, one is housing, affordable housing. Um, I have worked on the Housing Authority and to forward the, um, Lawson Green. And I, and I, by the way, I also work for the town of Cambridge part-time and, um, they have a lot of interesting, um, initiatives, um, including for, for, for affordable housing. So I thought I could bring that kind of perspective to the, um, to the board. Another one is, I think, improving the community outreach. I think our town tends to be a little forward inward look, looking and I think that we could improve things, um, that way. So I love you got you, your, um, weekly videos, by the way, of the, the COVID videos, they've been awesome. But we didn't get one this week.
We did one yesterday.
Oh, I didn't get it.
Oh.
I don't know if it got sent out, so. What's that?
We will remedy that.
Okay, um, so I just thought I'd throw my name in the hat. Um, even if I, uh, if you don't pick me, um, I would be happy to be the research person as the archivist. Um, so, um, happy to work with the committee anyway. Um, I, as of note, I found something recently. From 1970, our school system did a whole symposium and a lot of documentation on minorities attitudes and discriminations. And we have a lot of documentation. I thought that was interesting. It was a while ago, though.
Yeah, it is.
Well, not that long ago.
All right, boomer. Great, thank you, Jody. I want to open up to the board and, and see if they have additional questions. We certainly know your strengths for, obviously, research and all of that. And an important part of this role is to be able to bring a perspective to the work that can be applied to how we do business. So that's why it's important that a town employee, um, serve on this committee to say, yeah, that's a great idea, but he, you know, we have, this is how the unions are set up, or whatever it is. So, um, any other questions from the board? For Jody, Ms. Curran, and then Mr. Vignani.
Hi, Jody.
Hey.
Thanks for coming forward. I think you would be terrific. I have a question up for you. What means, like, what type of outreach to the rest of the town employees would you suggest? Like, what are the ideas on, on how you would best be able to share what's happening with the committee? And, you know, receiving input from different departments and bringing that forward to the committee?
So that's probably my weakest area, cause I'm, I only work for the town a very short amount of hours a week. But, um, I guess, I, I think I would have to go out, um, go to the different department heads and, uh, and, and talk to them and see what, um, what their perspective is, which I should be doing anyways as archivist. So I would combine my, combine my things.
Two birds with one stone.
Yeah, exactly.
And did you have any, uh, sorry, Ms., Madam Chair, I may ask another question.
Yes, please, Ms. Curran.
Did you have any sort of perspective on, um, the makeup of the committee? Whether you think it's a nice, it's a good balance? Is there something that we think, you may think is missing? Or we've asked everybody else that, that question as well, so I just thought it'd be fair to ask you, also, ask you that question.
I mean, I think I put my name in because I did see that, that looked like there was a diverse group. Um, I know you're, Ruth, you're seen, um, I, um, so I, that's why I thought, well, I mean, I first wouldn't, I didn't put my name in first because I, I thought it should be filled with people that have, that are from a minority perspective. But I do think it's a great group, um, that you've gotten so far.
Okay, great, thanks for raising your hand, as always.
You're welcome.
Mr. Vignani?
Yeah, hi, Jody. Uh, Mara stole part of my question there, but, um, again, I agree with her. I think you'd be great on the committee and I think you bring a whole new perspective, similar to Linda. You know, knowing the history of the town and having the ability to get at information that would be relevant to them. My question also was on the path of, um, you know, the interaction of town and, and making sure that, that the group, you know, it's, it's such a broad topic that we stay on task with. We're trying to figure out how the town's current business and current functionality, um, and, and assess that. Not the bigger picture of all the other things that need to go on with, with, uh, with this whole movement outside of the town. So, um, so I didn't know, I don't know if there's really a question in there, um, or more of a statement of, I, I, I think, um, that's the focus of, of the team members from the town to really keep people on task and give an understanding of how town government works. Or more importantly, know where to go get the answers, which is why I think you would come in very strongly. So, um, you have any thoughts on that and, and, and kind of your strength in being able to do that? Cause there's going to be a lot of questions, right?
Yeah, right. I, I think what we should, with the, with the, my opinion, the committee should be looking at systemic, um, discrimination or inequities. So that's, you know, so that's my perspective. I know that would cover a lot, but I think you have a group, you have the HR person, you have, uh, different, different groups of, um, people from different points of view. But I think, um, it's the ones that are built in that are hardest to look at, um, that we need to research, not the obvious ones, so that's.
Right, and that, that's the challenge, right, that's.
Right.
And I think you start, you know, you start with the easier ones, the low hanging fruit and then, then kind of go from there, I think, so. Um, anyways, I think you'd be a, an, an asset on the committee and I love the fact that you said, similar to Linda, you know, even if I'm not selected, I, I want to be involved.
Yes, definitely.
Cause it's important to me.
Okay.
Um, and then, Mr. Goodrich?
This may be unfair to ask, but I'm, I'm just curious, cause with your perspective, have you, have you seen in, in the town's history, looking back, that, you know, with the town has struggled with this issue before and how the town has possibly addressed it or maybe not addressed this? I mean, and I think you might be in a unique position to kind of know that, um, with, with the, with the research. And it's unfair, cause maybe you haven't dug in to look at it, but I'm just curious if you've done any, uh, side digging.
No, I don't think I have a good enough perspective to approach that. I, I think you would, you would want to look at minority religion, minority, minority, um, groups to, to look at that. I, so I don't, I haven't seen it, no. I'm sure the school systems, um, have an interesting perspective. So I think education is going to be an important part of this committee. No.
Great, are there any further questions for Jody?
No, just thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, as, I don't know if you heard me say earlier, we will be interviewing everyone and we'll confer at the end and just, and, and make our vote and new business later. You know, as we've all noted, that this is, an extraordinary group has come out before and in this particular group. So, um, we thank you very much for coming out.
Okay, great, thank you, all. Have a good evening.
You too. Talk to you later. Um, our last inter, our candidate for this position is Lucia Silveira, who I think is on the phone, not on video. Lucia? Are we, can we unmute her?
She's right there, she's a good voice.
She's, okay, all right.
Unmute, okay, can you hear me?
We can hear you, do you want to, are you inclined to put your video on?
Well, I've had my 11, 11-hour day, I'm still in the office and, um, yeah, I don't want to scare anyone.
Okay, uh, so Lucia is, uh, works with our, in our DPW office and, um.
Oh, did I put it on?
No, there she is.
Oh, you are.
Oh, sorry. Um, okay, so you've heard the questions that we will, um, we try to ask everybody. First is, why do you think this work is important and how do you think you can contribute to the conversation?
Well, first of all, I was reluctant to apply, um, but there was something nudging me for the past two weeks, um, well, prior to applying. I think I'm the only person of color in town hall. I'm also an immigrant, I speak another language. Uh, I grew up in Boston in the inner city and, um, and I don't live in Situate. Um, I moved to Hanover, Hanover's new to me, um, as well. But when I read through, um, you know, the advisory committee and, you know, it being created, um, obviously, the implication is that there's a need for, for this committee if one is being created. And it would be remiss of me not to apply, being a person of color, being a woman, uh, being an immigrant, speaking another language, and I grew up as a Seventh Day Adventist. Oh my goodness, I have so many things, uh, working, I guess, to my advantage. And I, being a tired, the, the tired mother in me said, no, this, I can't do this. But then the humanitarian part of me, the one that sees a lot, a lot of goodness in the world, obviously, but, you know, some things that can be changed. And if my unique experience and my voice can, um, be lent to that, um, obviously, I would like to do that. So it's with reluctance because I'm tired, I'm exhausted, right? But I also think it's important for me, um, to use my voice when there's a need for it. So that's the reason for me, um, applying. But was there another question? I'm sorry, I feel like that was very.
I think you merged the two questions perfectly in your answer, so thank you for that. Mara, I'll toss it over you, do you want to go with an, since you had done a second follow-up question before?
Oh, sure, I was going to let someone else go first since I just, um, but thank you so much for coming forward. Um, as someone who's new to the town hall and looking at, um, the makeup of the committee that we have, um, do you think there's anybody missing as far as participant? Have you, you know, what are your thoughts as to the composition of the, the committee today and how we sort of structured it?
Um, you mean in terms of what I've read, cause I'm sorry, I came.
Yeah, no, pretty much just, yep.
Um, the person that went on before me, I only caught her little bit of her interview, Jody, for example. Um, I think it's most important to have people, yes, I have a lot of things about me, my background and all of that, that would be helpful, right? But it's more important to have decent people, um, in the committee. And I do understand the need for diversity, it's, it's important in all aspects of life. It, it, it makes us smarter, more well-rounded, um, less scared, I mean, just so many different things. But Jody, she, she, she mentioned something and I thought that was admirable. She doesn't have a lot of what, you know, I have just naturally, right? Like being, um, being a person of color, all of the things that I had listed and yet she's still interested and she wants, um, from the goodness of her heart, she wants to help in whatever capacity and I thought that that was beautiful. And, um, more important than, you know, all of what I listed, being a decent person. And I think that that's what I would like to see. And I think anyone who is applying for this position, whether they have those attributes or not, um, I think they'll, they're going to be decent people, cause this is, um, public work, it's human services. Um, you do that out of the kindness and goodness of your heart. It's not paid, it's after work, it's, you know what I mean? So, like I said, it, you know, it's not something that I just jumped up to do initially. I just thought that maybe it might be helpful if I did. I don't know, but as far as what I've read and what I've heard, just, I think it's going to be a great committee full of good people with great topics and, um, you know, there's, there'll be understanding, education, empathy, all of that. And I think that, from what I see so far, and with time, obviously, we'll be able to change it. I don't know if that's a part of it, but from what I see now, I think it'll, it's, it's good. I think it'll work.
Well, thank you and thank you so much for stepping forward. And you certainly have an abundance of energy at 11 hours, at the 11th hour of your workday. So I can only imagine how much, um, dedication and energy you would bring to the committee also. So, thank you so much.
For saying that, I'm so hungry.
Where's Nancy? Go raise Nancy's ball.
Go, go, go visit Nancy.
No. I gained 25 pounds going to see Nancy.
So that, so anyone listening, this is our, Nancy Holt, our Finance Director, applies us with chocolate when we have to work late and we love her and not love her for the same, for that reason. Um, any other board members have questions for Lucy and then we'll let her go home? Uh, Tony and then Karen?
Yeah, I have more of a comment than, uh, Yeah, I have more of a comment than a question. You know, thank you for putting your name in. I think, as the other candidates do, you bring a perspective that is completely different. And I think it would be wonderful to have that on the committee. Selfishly, you know, you haven't worked here as long as some of the others, so you may not have the town perspective as much, but you have a whole nother perspective that I think would be great. As I was going to say, selfishly, I think it probably makes sense to put you on the committee so that you don't not be on the committee, because you're tired and you work so hard. And maybe the other people will come anyways and participate as well. So I think you would be a great addition to it, and I think you would be, bring such a unique perspective to it that I think it would be very advantageous to have you on the committee.
Thank you. I also think, one of the things that were, that was brought up was working in Town Hall. And I do work in Town Hall, and I think that I've made some great relationships with so many amazing people. I think if we do have any issues in Situate, it's not in Town Hall in terms of that. I mean, I really, I work with some great people, and if I didn't feel like they were great and amazing, I wouldn't be here. So I don't, you know, I'm not stuck here. So I'm here, and I do, I do have great relationships with people here. So I am, and that's not to take away from someone who isn't in Town Hall, but I am in Town Hall, and I can obviously talk to people more closely, and I do have those relationships.
Great.
Great. Karen, did you want to add something?
Yeah, just on a personal note, what attracted you to come to work in Situate? And how long have you been here?
Actually, I didn't want to work in Situate. I interviewed, I worked in real estate for many, many years. I'm also a Realtor. You know, I've worked in affordable housing, I'm, you know, as a seller's agent, buyer's agent. I love real estate. And we moved from Boston, and we bought our home in Hanover. And I was just, you know, and as a mom, you sacrifice, right? You, you, you look for the jobs that are closer to home. And initially, I applied to Norwell, and they had me come in, I don't know, maybe five different times, and they still didn't give me, give me the job, which I thought was crazy.
Too bad for them.
Yeah, and the human resources person there, she was so nice. She called me up, and she said, there's another job in Situate, and Situate is pretty close to Hanover. And honestly, that's the only reason why I applied.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we're lucky we got you.
I'm lucky to be here, too. Thank you.
All right. Well, great. Well, we appreciate you applying. We will be reviewing the candidates later tonight, and as I said, then we'll likely vote, and Lorraine will holler across the hall, and like, you know what happened?
Thank you, thank you so much.
All right, great. Thank you. Have a good day.
You too. Bye-bye.
We have five more interviews to do, so we're going to do a little speed dating. We, the next on our interviews is for Widow's Walk, which for the board is tab 39 in our book. And we have first Brad Crozier, hopefully I said that right, which I doubt I did. Nope, he's nodding good. All right, you're unmuted. And we will, we, I'll remind the board that there are, right now, there are two openings on the Widow's Walk board. So Brad, if you'd like to tell everybody a little about yourself and why you like to serve on this particular committee. Oh, wait, we're not hearing you. Says you're unmuted, but, no, now you're muted. Hold on, sorry, technical glitch here.
I don't know if he has speaker in his computer. That's the problem, like the microphone, rather.
Do you have a, let's see.
Brad, you can unmute yourself if you need. Try that again.
All right, that voices are, is Seth Pfeiffer behind the curtain? And it still says muted on yours, on my little box here.
All right.
I hear you.
Thank you. All right. Hands up. Thanks for putting up with that, and thank you for having me. So I'm excited to be here tonight. This, my family and I moved here about three years ago. We lived in the Sandhills area with two great kids, three and two. And for us, we've found home. So we love, we love the area, we love the town. And from there, once we found home, for me, I just, I wanted to become more involved. And so, so in looking around, and I've been on these meetings for, you know, I think I've listened to three out of the last four. And, you know, Widow's Walk came top of mind to me, just because ever since the golf club was put in my hands at nine years old, it's something that I love to be around, and it's something that I thought I could relate to. And so when I saw the opportunity to join a committee like that, I was excited to jump at the chance. So that's why I'm here today.
Great. So I will note that, yes, you did put down ZBA and Planning Board, and EDC is also interests. And, but I won't, board, do you have other questions about Widow's Walk and this application? Mr. Vignani, our liaison to Widow's Walk?
Brad, thanks for getting involved. First of all, do you play Widow's Walk? Have you been there?
Yeah, so I, my wife and I play there quite a bit. In fact, we bravely, I think, we tried to take our three and our two-year-old to the driving range over the past summer. And what turned into, I thought, a great practice session, turned into more of a hide-and-seek session. But it was, I thought it was, I thought it, I thought it was a good first attempt. But no, I've played there a handful of times. Eighteen coming in is one of my favorites, just as you kind of have the water on the left, and you're looking over the marshes there. I thought it's, I do love the course.
And have you been to any of the meetings or heard anything? I mean, there's a ton going on there right now. Is there anything specific that has piqued your interest in the committee?
You know, I think, I was, I was on a meeting where I was, I was able to take a look, you know, at the drawings of the clubhouse and what's being done there, which is really exciting. You know, I think one of the things that attracted me to this as well is moving from Northeast Ohio. We came from a golf community, and that golf community, or called Red Cell, they also had a redesign that I was able to take part in, as far as making different choices to their outdoor area. And so, you know, that was a lot of fun for me. It was fun to be involved in that, in kind of the decision-making there, and to kind of see that take place over time. So, yeah, that's also what attracted me to this.
Great.
So I guess I'll try to get some free business consulting with this. It's been 20 years of marketing. Do we market the course properly?
I think I could, yeah. So I think one of the things that I'm able to do in kind of the business world, and I would hope to be able to apply it to this, would, it all comes down to what are you trying to accomplish? And then what is your basically operational plan to be able to do that? And so in doing that in business, and I've come from the faucet world, it's, you know, it's, you find out what segment you're going after, and you have different plans as far as, you know, what are you going to do from social? What are you going to do outreach-wise? What are you going to do, what are you going to do to, in an event standpoint, to be able to generate interest, generate revenue for the course? And I think upfront planning and being able to do that, and then executing that plan throughout the way, I think I could apply that from what I'm doing in the business world, and then apply that to the golf world as well.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, great experience. So, yeah, having your resume. Being born in Ohio, I have a special affinity, so doesn't give you the advantage. The other committees that you've applied for do not currently have any openings. I will note that Economic Development Committee has been actively putting together sort of subcommittees as well for different initiatives that they're trying to do. So if you have an interest in that, you can reach out to their chair and do that as well. But we do have two openings on this, and we have you and our next interviewee to discuss about joining the committee. So did somebody ask, I'm sorry, did you, have you attended any of the meetings or met the existing? You did ask that. Okay, sorry. I was reading about Ohio.
Thanks, Brad.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next candidate is Maria Monica, who is right there. Okay. So you're unmuted. Let's see if it worked.
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can. Thank you so much for dating and for your interest. As we said, you've applied for one of two openings. And why don't you tell us why you're interested in Widow's Walk, and how you think you can help this very active committee?
Well, like Brad, I moved here a few years ago, and I love Situate. I love everything about it. I love the people. And I love Widow's Walk. I mean, I play there at least twice a week. I am an interior designer. I am retired at the moment. I'm semi-retired. I'm working for an interior designer now in Cohasset. But I, I had two companies, one in Nantucket and one in New Jersey. And I do a lot in construction and outside design, as well as interior design. I think Widow's Walk has so much potential of becoming a really great club that would almost probably turn into a private club, if I'm not too careful. Because it's a great location. It's got beautiful views. I think I could bring some ideas to the committee as to some of the aesthetics in the club. But also, I think, you know, Widow's Walk can develop a lot more in doing events and holding up, you know, doing more committees. I don't know if Widow's Walk is going to expand into other things other than golf. But I've been on several committees. I was, I was on a paddle committee and the golf committee at Montclair Golf Club in New Jersey, which is, has four nines. It was quite a large club. And I worked with the Women's Golf League there. So I just enjoyed the town. I enjoy the club. And I thought, now's the time for me, since I'm kind of semi-retired, that I could really get more involved with the town.
I love your new perspective. It's like, definitely, definitely, the timing is perfect, given where we are with the clubhouse. So-
Right.
Interior golfer, so this is fabulous.
Yeah.
My humble opinion. Are there questions from the board? Yeah, I guess the question we always ask is, have you participated in any of the golf meetings or met any of the folks that are already serving on the committee?
I, well, I've met with and also played golf with Susan Decost. And she's the one that kind of encouraged me to go into this. And, but I have not, I have not been able to go to any of those meetings, no.
Great.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
It's always great when a current member recruits somebody. They know what, they know what they're asking them to do, so.
Right, right. And speaking with Susan on it in length, you know, I've kind of gotten an idea of what exactly is the plan for the reconstruction.
Great.
As I said, I've dealt with reconstruction a lot. I'm not an architect. I do do designs. I know how to do drawings. I know how to get materials. Being in the field, I can also help Widow's Walk getting discounted materials. So, to me, I thought maybe-
Do I have a motion? Does the board have any other questions? terrific. Ms. Curran?
Thank you.
So I'd just like to add, Maria, it looks like, too, that you have some retail experience. So that's always a nice, nice experience to help Ian with the pro shop and take a look at inventory levels with him as well, to make sure that the product's turning, you know.
I mean, I'm very involved with my daughter shopping Cohasset outside in. So we do a lot of inventory work, and she's the big buyer. But I've had a shop myself where I was a buyer, and so I know that information.
Well, you have some great experience to add to the committee, so thank you for coming forward. And I wanted to say to Brad, too, before he left, was, you know, we had a marketing gentleman leave the committee, so having that marketing experience also would be a nice addition back in, too.
Absolutely, yeah.
Some great experience.
Yeah.
Thank you, Maria.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, to both of you. We'll be reviewing and voting later in the evening, and Lorraine will let everyone know what next steps are for the process. So thank you for your time this evening.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
And then we have three folks interested in Syste Embree, which we revised. It's not in my book, because I have the old book. We revised the numbers to... Lorraine, remind me the language that we approved, because I don't have the right paperwork?
Up to 12 members.
Okay, thank you. I remember the conversation, but forgot the vote. So that provides opportunity for folks to come in. And we have three applicants, and I think Lorraine sent us two separately. And I apologize, I do not have that in front of me.
That's okay. There are three applicants. In section 32 of your book, you will have their backup there.
Oh, we do? Okay.
Susan Horgan, Lynn Ferrera, and Kate Loger. I hope I'm pronouncing their names correctly.
Okay. All right. Well, I see Sue is patiently waiting, so we will start with you. Hi, Sue. So you're interested in Syste Embree, and if you could tell the board quickly about your, your interest in this committee and what you think you can do. And the third question is, what's your association today?
Okay. I'll probably start with the third question. I've been involved since 2006, when they had the Artist Exchange. And so I had the opportunity to go over there in 2006 and 2009 also. I've been twice involved with that, but working with the committee for all that time, really just supporting them. I was a teacher and retired now, and had an opportunity to have cultural exchanges with the students in the high school before. So not in Situate, but Cohasset. So we took them to Belize and Guatemala, and I did really well. But I think travel is absolutely the best education. And as an educator, it just seemed like a thing I could do. I love to travel. I've traveled extensively. But I think what is most important about the travel is getting to know the culture and actually being with the people for an extended period of time, eating, you know, in their homes. And as the children come over here, seeing what the students here like and dislike, and their similarity and differences. I just think it's a great, a great committee. So, yeah, I'd like to brainstorm what we're going to do with the kids when they come. Kind of thing. So I'm trying to think what else we've done. I love to think about different ways to go about showing the differences and similarities in the art and the cooking, and games, and music, and all the great cultural things. So, yeah. So what I can bring to the committee is, I don't know, time. Anything they want me to do, you know, I'm free, I'm retired. So it's the one thing, my passion is traveling and meeting new people and experiencing new people. So it's just a lot of fun. On both of my, on my trips, I was able to stay with one woman. And, you know, you just make so many wonderful friends. So she's visited me here, and she's actually even met me in Italy. So, and I see the saying for a lot of the people that have gone over, you know, we're closer as a group in Situate, and then have a great group in France. And the kids look like they're doing the same thing, so.
You summed up the entire purpose of the exchange, or the Sister City program. So I've known Sue a long time, and I can tell you with complete confidence that she would be an excellent- that she would be an excellent contributor to this committee. So thank you for volunteering to come forward. Are there any other questions? I am going to kind of scoot us along because we have a lot on our agenda still ahead of us. Any other questions? No, okay.
Good, I got off easy.
You got off easy. All right, now let's pick on, I think, who's next, Kate? We're going to pick on Kate next. All right, Kate Loger, is it Logar?
Logar, yeah.
The same, same questions for you. How have you, how well do you know this committee and why do you want to, why would you like to serve on here?
I've, I've probably participated in a lot of different Sister City activities, maybe over the past five years. And my husband and I were fortunate to take part in the French Cultural Exchange. We traveled to Sissy-Embree in May of 2019 and stayed with a couple of the Marans and it was such a rewarding and well-organized travel experience for us. In fact, we're still in contact with the Marans, we go back and forth and share pictures and videos and they were very interested in our election too. And I've seen Patrick Carr, she's, she works so hard and I would like to, I was asked by her, but I would also like to help continue these exchanges and activities because it is a lot of work behind the scenes. Besides the adult exchange, I know they do an artist exchange and they also, there's a high school exchange that's involved as well. In fact, we're been talking about what we can do to keep up these relationships during COVID-19, during these times. I think it's really important that the, us as Americans, gain a broader worldview and present a positive image of the United States and also a great image of Situate because it's a town with a rich historical and cultural background. So the exchanges are pretty important, I feel.
Absolutely. Any other questions? I think you guys, you guys know what you're jumping into for sure.
We do.
All right, well, you're going to off easy too and we're going to see if you can pick on Lynn, I guess. Lynn, are you on video or are you?
I'm here, let me put, I'll put on video. There I am, hi.
There you are, hi Lynn, thank you for waiting.
Thank you for having me.
So three questions for you is, is how well do you know this committee? Why do you want to serve and how can you help?
I've been a resident of Situate for 19 years and my, both my children have gone through the public school system. And five years ago, we had the pleasure of hosting our first French exchange student and since I've hosted seven altogether. And last year I had the pleasure of visiting Soucy with this group, this committee, who I really got to know and enjoy. And so I was, I stayed with the family of my very first student that I hosted and I'm looking forward to welcoming them next October, we're talking about maybe the adults will be coming to visit us. So, yeah, we have relationships that we keep going, we're in touch with a few of the children that have stayed with me. And also Patricia Jacart, who's in charge of this committee, hardworking lovely woman, invited us to join, to help her, to keep it, you know, it's been going for 10 years now and it takes a lot of people and a lot of time to keep it going and ideas and I'd like to volunteer my time and ideas and experience of being a host and being hosted to show these students what real Americans are like and Situate people are like, you know, a real family. So it's been my pleasure and I would like to pay it forward.
Thank you so much, well, we got to give a big shout out to Pat for recruiting strong candidates and talking us into adding more people. Because it is, you're right, 10 years is, this group has really done remarkable things to strengthen our bonds outside of our borders, so. Does the board have any other questions for Lynn? I think you covered, I think you checked, you guys are easy.
Yeah, I mean, they all have hands-on experience, it's.
Yeah. Great, okay, well, we will, as I said, we will later in the evening be reviewing and doing official votes and Lorraine will then be in touch with next steps and all of the things that need to happen to get you on board, should the vote go that way.
Okay, fingers crossed.
Thanks so much. Thank you so much for your time and your.
Au revoir.
We should have conducted in French.
Oh, no, no, no.
You do the next. Great.
That's all I know.
That concludes, I believe that's all our interviews for this evening, so you can put the big book away. And our next is at 8:05, ooh, we're not that far off, so then happy. We have a discussion vote on a special event, which Jean de Jacamodaro, which I almost got right, did I get it correct? And Stephen Litchfield would like to propose for our consideration. So do we have?
They are not here, Lorraine, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't see them here, but, you know, they probably didn't join, they're involved in so many things.
Yeah, so it's pretty straightforward, it's in the backup.
Yes.
And what is proposed is essentially the same, the same event that when the Easter Bunny visited Situate, they, he was driven around on a, I don't know if it was the fire truck or back of a truck, he's driven around town on a parade road basically and it's a reverse parade. Residents are invited to stand in their yards, have Santa come by and wave to them in a socially distant and coordinated fashion. I believe we have that each department has reviewed this, I have to find that backup. Let's see, yeah, here we go, so police, fire, DPW, health, rec, ArborMaster have all said that they have no issue with the proposed plans. The event would be on December 13th unless the weather's really awful, in which case Santa will come back on the 20th instead. So does the board have any concerns or questions that we need to take back to these guys? Or they were involved in the last one, so they, this is their second run at this?
Nope, I was so happy to see the Easter Bunny, so I think I will be equally as happy to see Santa and his friends drive by my house.
Yes.
I heard Mrs. Claus might come too, not sure.
Oh.
Even better.
Okay. Have any other comments or questions about this particular event?
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the special event permit? Anyone?
Move to approve a special event permit to Jean de Jacamo Andrea, sorry, for the Santa and Friends Caravan, December 13th, 2020, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
Moved by Ms. Conley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vignani, any further discussion? Before we vote, I suppose because it is such a public event, I will ask if there's anyone who is here that would like to comment on this proposal or get in line for Santa. I don't see anyone who would want to, so we can go to a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Great, and thank you so much to, I know it's not just the two of them, it takes a lot of people to organize something like this, so thank you for doing this for our community. That brings us to our 8:10, which is an update of the sewer projects. As I noted at the beginning of the meeting, we will not be getting an update on the water projects, both of which are usually provided to us quarterly. There was a family emergency for those who are going to present on the waterside, so we will postpone that until we can have them present. But we are fortunate that Mr. Will Branton is in his little box and is here to give us an update on our sewer projects.
Hello, thank you for having me, I just wanted to start off, check my audio and volume levels, how am I registering?
You're good.
Good.
Thank you for having me tonight, I've been impressed at the capacity for caring and just truly encouraged by the number of applicants and the outpouring of encouragement throughout the town. It's great to see the ways that we're supporting each other during these difficult times. Wanted to make myself available to update on the number of sewer projects going on across town and just be available for any questions for the number of projects going on. We've got a number of active, large construction projects, ranging from the Cedar Point Construction Project going on in town. We're going on doing private services at the moment. Like Jim mentioned at the onset of this meeting, we're going to be gearing up for mainline work starting after the Christmas break. As that equipment moves into town, we just ask that people respect that equipment. It will be a very active site and it is very large equipment that'll be moving in and out of that area. So just for safety's sake, for everyone to try to, you know, respect that equipment and keep a safe distance. I know that's a term that we've heard a lot this year, but more than six feet is needed for this type of equipment. On the positive note, at Cedar Point, we're seeing a lot of positive influences for the INI impacts in town. At the last sewer update, we were talking about being pretty much maxed out on our capacity. We are starting to see the impacts of capacity being restored to the system. Right now, we're beginning to understand how much of that is attributed to the drought this year and how much is attributed to these INI projects. So we've got a sewer system evaluation survey that we're currently undergoing and will be having a follow-up presentation in the early spring with all of our findings for conclusions for what we're seeing for this progress and also recommendations for additional projects to remove and restore, fully restore the sewer's capacity in town. A number of other ongoing projects is the SCADA replacement at the wastewater plant. This is a project that has been slightly delayed due to the COVID pandemic. There's just been a lot of supply chains that have been disrupted and computer supply chains have not been immune to that. Thankfully, the critical operations or the critical components of the system will be completed by spring of 2021. However, one thing has been made apparently clear to us through this pandemic and that is that the changing world of information technology will most likely necessitate future SCADA projects in an ongoing fashion, particularly as we begin to identify, you know, different security issues in ways that our devices can communicate more efficiently amongst each other. We want to move the plant towards a much more efficient and secure future with this new technology that's available. Let's see, we're working on constructing a new septic receiving station at the wastewater plant. This is another project which has some slight delays due to COVID. The large receiving equipment and the building itself is going to be a prefabricated building. Some of the components going into that building have been tied up and many of the supply chain issues, but we're looking forward for that station to be coming online probably in spring of 2021, awaiting a few more schedule changes on that one. The other large component of that project is a large dewatering or drying station for the debris that we collect during sewer cleaning projects. That project is well underway and is expected to be completed potentially later this month or next month. So we're very excited to get that, you know, in the ground. It will need to set and rest in the ground before it's usable, but we're looking to put that to some heavy use as we get into the spring of 2021. This will be used as a way to catch up on our collection system maintenance throughout town. It's a way to kind of take all that stuff out of the system and deal with it in a safe and sanitary way. Let's see. And as always, we're continuing to work on ongoing operations at the plant, adapting to this ever-changing world as our residents change their behaviors in town. We're seeing, you know, changes in water use that the DPW will speak more to when we're available to. But the general behavior for people to stay in home and the type of waste that we're seeing enter the collection system are changing in ways that are different and we're now preparing for these changes to potentially be ongoing as people seem to be getting used to and needing to stay in this winter season. We're beginning to adapt to these changes and just getting ready for those changes. A lot of these increased demands has led to increase in chemical and power consumption at the facility as a way to keep up with some of the industrial waste that we're seeing enter the plant, either from extra cleaning materials that are being used in households throughout town, dealing with the, you know, heavy flushable wipes in town, which I must encourage residents, please don't believe the advertisement on the box, these wipes are not flushable. They put a lot of undue strain on our collection system and that leads to a lot of rampant, you know, electrical costs for the town. So it's these challenges that we're struggling to keep up with, but we are hopeful that we'll be able to provide solutions as we move towards, you know, again, restoring capacity in the spring and coming before you for the request for a facilities plan to help us identify some of these challenges as we move towards our permanent renewal process. So I'd like to make myself available, I know I covered kind of a large area there, just wanted to make myself available for any questions for these many projects throughout town.
I muted myself, Andrew Lucardi to jump in?
Well, so I guess my first question, well, first of all, thank you for the report and all the work that you do. I have, I was, the SCADA or SCADA data, and I know that we've made some investments there. Are there any areas around town that you think we might, I know you said you'll come back later with some other places and other suggestions, but where you wish you had more of that data or, I know how critical, important that is for you to get all that data, but is there any, anything you think that you're missing or you wish you said, oh, this would be really helpful going forward? If not, that's fine, I was just curious if there were, if you were missing some piece?
Some data that would be useful to have out in the field would just be more flow metering technology and flow metering devices out in the field. As part of our sewer system evaluation study, we're actually going to be installing several more flow metering devices throughout town. I believe that's going to be scheduled for the month of January at the moment. Currently, we have four operating permanently across town. We had a number brought in in the 2017 study and we're currently reviewing whether or not we're going to have additional permanent ones installed throughout town. But this, that would give us some historical data for the conditions of pipes throughout town and we'd be able to detect, if we had more of these around the town, we'd be able to detect trends not only to preemptively prevent things like sewer blockages or backups, but also to plan for, you know, large-scale maintenance projects and capital projects. If we were to see a certain area of town where there isn't any development going on or isn't any new homes connecting to sewer, but we started to see an increase in the flow for that area, we would know to begin looking for groundwater leaks or inflows from ocean or other defects in the pipes in those areas. So that's where we're really interested to try to capture some more data in the field. Another area where we'd love some more data is PFAS chemicals, but that's one where our regulators will guide us in that evolving field as that field is very new to the entire United States, not just Situate.
That's great, thank you, that's helpful.
Great, does the board, Ms. Conley?
Yes, well, I'm not entirely sure how to ask this question, but the issue of the shellfish beds being closed along the North River is of great concern and I, there was some mention of the sewer treatment plant in Situate and I was under the impression that the sewer treatment plants, not just in Situate but everywhere, are very heavily regulated in terms of what they're discharging. And so do you have any input or any thought about what that situation is or when is it going to be resolved?
We are indeed very, very heavily regulated. I believe that this new regulation is out of an overabundance of caution from our federal regulators. They, given with the issues and the, of the pandemic this year, they're very concerned about the possibility of viral contaminants and the possibility of worst-case scenarios. I'm very proud to say that Situate is very far away from any sort of worst-case scenario. I know that, you know, we may have to take some extra precautions, but. I know that, you know, we may have to take some extra precautions, but I would invite members of the board to visit our facility. This is a conversation that we're beginning to have with our regulators about how much caution is needed for these areas. We noticed that the areas that they closed, they mostly just looked at where are their sewer plants located? And they didn't really dive into the characteristics or quality of the effluent for these wastewater plants. So Situate actually operates a UV disinfection system, which has been identified in prior studies to be one of the most affection efficient disinfection systems for viral contaminants. So we're going to be engaging in some some studies in the spring in order to demonstrate our ability to disinfect the things that our regulators are now starting to worry about.
So so my impression is they simply closed it down because of the proximity of the plant without testing to see if the plant, in fact, is operating properly or not.
We 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 did, it would have been appreciated if some testing could have occurred prior to.
Right.
But they they mostly just looked at the areas and and closed based on location.
Here's the question, Karen.
Now we go and study.
Yes. The plant was there, so the shellfish got closed. We didn't do any, nothing Will did, nothing the plant did, nothing to do with the with what Situate Sewer Department does. It's just that Situate Sewer Department is there.
Right.
So they closed down the shellfish.
Well, having been on a tour of the wastewater treatment plant, I know how careful they are, so it was kind of distressing to see just because it was there, they decided to close down those beds. I assume we're appealing that.
They they closed it down because they want to do a new diffusion test. Is that correct, Will? And rather than do the test and see the results, they said, we're just going to close it and we'll get to the test when we get to the test.
Yep. Yeah, like I mentioned, it's sort of an overabundance of caution scheduling. These types of testing is is very difficult right now. Scheduling large-scale projects in general is difficult and the EPA, I presume, wanted to go on the side of caution. So that that's why they took the action they took. But we are actively engaging where regulators choose schedule the testing to to either prove or disprove what they're worried about.
Maybe this is a question for Jim. Are there any other coastal towns that have had their shellfish beds closed down?
Will could probably answer that, but I can't, but I think it's anybody that has a plant similar to ours. They've closed down their recreational beds. Is that be correct, Will? I think Plymouth got shut down.
That's correct. We also know our sister town, I'm not sure if it's officially a sister town, but our neighbor town Marshfield had some of their locations closed and they they recently underwent an entire sewer plant upgrade. And they also operate a an ocean outfall with with diffuser technology, so it was very much dependent on whether or not there was a plant located in an area and and did not look at the particular technologies or abilities of the plant to meet their permit, unfortunately.
Thank you. It's unfortunate.
Yeah, and I'll I'll get to Mara, your next side. On that subject, we'll note that, you know, our department, our sewer department and the North and South Rivershed have worked together for years. And it's, you know, every year the quality is better and better and better. So thanks for taking the fight on that one. So Mara, is that what you were?
Yeah, well, two questions. One, just to follow up, you know, so what is the timing on that appeal? What are we? Any idea? Jim?
I have not heard. I don't know if Will has. We were you going through Senator Representative Lynch's office. We tried to put some pressure on the federal agencies to either get them to come out and do the testing or to lift the ban. We haven't seen any results from that yet. Will, I don't think they've given you a timeline on when they plan to come out and do this testing. Do you?
Unfortunately not. We we are still awaiting a timeline for our our permit, which ran up several years ago and we're still on a continuance with that one with the federal government. So very much awaiting some communication there.
Okay. Madam Chair, maybe we write yet another letter to Congressman Lynch.
Great suggestion to keep the.
Lots going on here. And then secondly, Will, you had said that you need more flow metering devices, that those would be helpful. Do we have? Jim, is that our capital dollars or do those fall under just expenses? I don't know how costly they are.
Kind of how many he wants and how expensive they are.
Did we put it into the cap? Did we put them into the capital request, Will?
Are there any new capital requests now, Will?
They're they're a component. They, at this point, they'd be a component of the large sewer system evaluation capital project that we're doing with our environmental partners. So that's a nearly $400,000 capital project and flow meters will be included as a component of that.
In that, okay. I just wanted to make sure that we're getting you what you need to test the system.
I I've been blessed with with what has been provided. I will probably be before you again in the spring requesting additional resources as as we begin to understand the challenges before us.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions? I have a couple. I'm seeing any heads. So just just so I can get some clarity, so I understand. So you mentioned the drought impact, so I'm presuming that if the groundwater table is reduced, then there there's presumably less inflow? Is that is that what that meant?
Correct, yeah. In a in a previous report, I identified that the the rolling averages for the wastewater plant, that's the the large number that our capacity is based off of. That number can fluctuate as much as 26% based off of weather patterns and and things like groundwater level. So that makes it very frustratingly difficult to predict future years, not knowing what the groundwater level will be or not knowing what weather events would occur in the future. But that's why we want to make sure that we don't overattribute any sort of gains that we're seeing right now to our INI projects. We want to make sure that we can clearly identify what has been gains from Cedar Point and what has been gains from the weather from the drought this year.
Okay. Yeah, and presumably that the inflow is because there's leaks or holes or or compromises to the pipes that are in the groundwater table, correct?
Correct, yeah. Most, I'd estimate about 60% of the town sewer system is still made out of material like like vitrified clay and cast iron. And it's just been subject to to wear and tear over the years and it's a material that that just happens to break down over time.
And what's the current capacity regardless of the source right now?
Let's see, to date, our rolling average is 1.346 million gallons per day. Our permitted amount is 1.6 MGD. So I got to do that in my head, but by my math, that's about 80, I'm going to say 84%. In the ballpark, Nancy.
There's at least a silver lining to the dry weather. And can you just very quickly, the the permit cycle, so we don't, we're working on an extension. Can you just walk us through what that, I mean, when you could expect that process to to complete? I'm a little fuzzy on that.
Just to regarding expansion, was that the question?
No, I you said we're on a provisional permit right now, operating on a and it's, I didn't, that wasn't the word you used, but that we don't have our full permit in place. Is that, did I hear that correctly?
Yes, we're we're operating off an approved continuance of our permit. Our permits lapsed back in 2017. We're just awaiting a new permit from the EPA. So that that would be, you know, a potential risk on the horizon for the wastewater facility. We do expect a new permit to come with new, more stringent limits. And those stringent limits, you know, will necessitate things like either new chemicals or new treatments or more electricity to be used for the processes that we have at the plant in order to meet that that level of treatment. We we've been very proud of our effluent because of our stringent requirements. We're treated as having a dilution factor of zero. So we're given no dilution factor for any of the the river water or the tidal waters that regularly go in and out of the river for where we contribute. We're measured solely off of what we contribute, so we have to be very careful for what we put out and we're very proud that what we put out is some very pure product. Usually we're moving in the ballpark of like 98 to 99% of what's called biological oxygen demands. So basically, akin to the the sanitary bottles that we're seeing all over the place, we we get rid of 99% of all that bad stuff out there.
That's great. No, it's impressive. Does the board have any other questions for Will? I do note that there are some residents with hands up. Mr. Goodrich and Mr. Ben.
Do we, I mean, being at 85%, do we know what? I mean, we don't have this, but if we just did, like, what's the North Situate number we have to hit? If we're aggressive with with this INI, this INI, like, how many gallons per day do we expect that that might bring in? So like, what? I guess I'm trying to say, if we continue down this road, what's a number that we're kind of looking for that we can bring them online?
So we we've identified North Situate to have an initial sewer flow estimated around 90,000 gallons per day and to have an expected sewer flow of about 150,000 gallons per day. So 0.15 MGD. We would, as a facility, we'd want to get below our 80% threshold and prove that that 80% restoration has been done because of our projects and not because of any sort of weather events or groundwater level. So that's what we're looking to to study over the course of the winter and present in the spring is whether or not or rather, how close we are to that 80% truly from INI projects. And then how much more is needed with additional INI projects to truly bring our levels down below 80% in a lasting way, where weather events will no longer affect us because we've affected or rather, we've repaired these leaks, which are allowing these weather events to affect us in such significant and unfortunate ways.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Ben.
Yeah, hey, Will, thanks for giving us a report and you're doing a great job. Tell me a little bit about Cedar Point. What is what has gone on there now that would cause it to drop significantly? I mean, we haven't installed the new pipes yet. I know we've identified some connector pipes that were were extremely poor. But isn't that still underwater and processing, you know, seawater as it did before?
So the main line is what remains largely for that project. What we've completed mostly thus far is is the private portion of the services. So we're finding a lot of defects from the roadways back to the building that seem to be contributing to a lot of our inflow problems. So that that's why it's both, that's why we always call it inflows and infiltration. Usually the infiltration is found in the deep mainline pipes in the roadways. But the inflows are normally found in those smaller pipes going up to the the homes and the residences.
So have we replaced all the laterals?
We've replaced, I would estimate about 70 to 80% of the laterals thus far from the property line to the building. There's a portion of the lateral called the the chimney section, which will be remain to be done as part of the the mainline work.
So the new laterals are going into the old main right now?
Correct, yep.
Okay. Okay, so there could actually be some some savings on the the high tide and the poor laterals.
Yes, we we very much expect the improvements that we've seen so far to continue as as the project reaches completion over over the winter months.
Right.
And that's most critical to see those numbers because that's when we typically get our coastal flooding events. And and we're, you know, very eager to see how the system will handle those types of events.
Right. Great.
We we know we're getting savings, lack of a better term, from the lateral work we've already done. I think what Will pointed out earlier is he's not comfortable saying how much of the savings we're seeing right now is from the work we're doing and how much is it from the fact that we just had a very dry summer.
Right. I didn't realize that we had actually improved the current system. You know, we've almost, you know, done 50, potentially 50% of the problems could have been the laterals.
And that was one of the discussions we have with the residents, but, you know, Will could describe it better than I can. We found laterals that were connected with duct tape. We found laterals that were completely crushed and broken. So the seawater was just coming in every time the tide came and the seawater was going right down the pipe and into the source system. So those have all been, almost all been replaced. But as Will said, the big part of that job is still to come and that's the that's the main line.
Right. Thank you.
Well, as always, thank you for your very thorough and thoughtful update. We appreciate it. Did anyone on the board have any additional questions? I know that there was a hand raised and I would like to give the opportunity to the public to pick Will's brain if they'd like. So if you are waiting to ask a question, if you could go to the participants icon at the bottom of your screen and raise hand or simply unvideo or put your video on and and wave, that would work. I did see a hand earlier. I don't know if they're answered. Maybe their question was answered. I'll give it another second. Okay, I guess no, I guess we were thorough.
I'd just like to pipe in and, you know, the only time people think of the Sewer Department is when they get their bill or they have a problem. And that's a good thing. No one knows who Will is. No one knows who works for him because they do such a good job of making sure there's no problems. And I've never met anybody who's as enthusiastic as Will is talking about surge. But he does a fantastic job. The guys and women who work for him do a great job and people should really be sleeping well at night, knowing that their effluent is under control and is being dealt with in all the manners that it's supposed to be. And and they really, really work hard to make sure that we don't have any problems in the system. So he's to be congratulated that no one knows who he is and doesn't have to see him because he's doing such a good job of keeping problems from arising.
Thank you.
Well. Thank you, Will.
And if you really truly want to thank Will or give him a good holiday gift, do not put your flushables down the toilet, please.
No flushable wipes.
No flushable wipes. All right, great. Well, thank you, Will. We will hope, you know, if if all goes well, we will not be talking to you for well, we'll be talking to you with budget seasons, which is upon us. So we'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Great. All right, thanks, Will. Which puts us exactly at 8:40. And it is where we begin the budget process. We have a presentation by Jim Bedrow, Town Administrator, Nancy Holder, Town Accountant, Finance Director about the Fiscal 2022 Operating Budget and Capital Presentation Overview. So this is how we always kick this off and it's to give us sort of the bird's eye view before we dig into each of the individual budgets. So I don't know, are you guys going to be share screen sharing the presentation?
I can share my screen.
Okay.
I think with my share screen button.
On the bottom, little green button. There we go.
Is it sharing?
Yep.
Well, we didn't do fade-ins.
Oh, graphics.
So, yeah, I mean, Will, Will's talking about all the projects that are going to be completed in the spring of 2021. It sounds like it's so far away. We just had a town meeting a couple of weeks ago dealing with fiscal year 21 and yet here we are dealing with the fiscal year 22 budget, which starts July 1 of 2021. So I'm going to go through it pretty high level tonight, just to let you know where some of the challenges are. I know most of you picked up your books. We won't really go into nitty-gritty on any of the budget side, I don't think. But just to let you know what I'm thinking, what we've done with the Financial Forecast Committee and how we're looking so far. So really, to start is fiscal 20 recap. We had a very good year for free cash. That was almost all driven by the departments stopping their spending. We put a stop spending order on them very early during the pandemic. If you didn't need to spend it, don't spend it. And they did a really, really good job of doing that and turned back a lot of money to the general fund and to the free cash last year. Our receipts are up. New growth was up significantly for fiscal 20, continues for fiscal 21. We continue our capital investments and we are maintaining our AA plus bond rating. Later on, we'll talk about our financial policies, which we hope some of those changes will maybe get us to that AAA. The coronavirus impact, obviously, it's impacted everything we did. Town meeting was postponed. We made reductions in the fiscal year 21 operating budget based on what we thought were going to be changes to state revenue and state budgets. The state budget is still not completed at this point. The local aid figures will be higher than what we had projected for fiscal year 21, which is good. That money which is good. That money will then wrap in, go directly into our stabilization fund, any excess funds at the end of doing the recap, go into our stabilization fund. But even with fiscal year 21, finally getting a budget, fiscal year 22 remains very uncertain for the state. The good news today is the President's head of Operation Warp Speed, which is the plan to get the coronavirus vaccine out to the public, said that by June of next year, anybody in this country who wants to have a vaccine will have the opportunity to have had it by June. So that's very good news when you're talking about the next fiscal year, but we still don't know what's going to happen. The fact that we're getting level funded local aid from fiscal year 20 to fiscal year 21, this budget cycle is predicated upon the state taking over a billion dollars out of their rainy day fund to, to balance the budget. I don't think they can do that two years in a row, so we are still being very cautious in our revenue projections for fiscal 22. And I'm really waiting to see what the consensus revenue figure from the state comes out. Usually in December, we'll see what that looks like and give us a better idea where fiscal 22 is going. We've spent 1.9 million right now on COVID expenses. Most of that's been reimbursed through Plymouth County in the CARES Act. We're still waiting for the rest of it. But Nancy has been the poster child on how to do these applications, so we've been very good at getting our money reimbursed. But as of December 30th, the CARES money goes away. We will still have COVID expenses into the new calendar year. And it's unclear right now whether we will be getting any more additional aid from the state or the federal government to meet those COVID expenses. So we could see some additional expenses late in the fiscal year for COVID that we would then have to true up at the Springtown meeting. Fiscal year 21, again, new growth was, was very high. We could talk to Joe DeVito about that, but a lot of that was Toll Brothers and some other projects. Our local receipts were pretty good for fiscal 21 so far. As I pointed out, what's going to happen with COVID after December 30th? And we are finally getting some money back from the federal government for our fourshore projects that have been waiting and waiting and waiting. And we continue to move forward with those. We put a half a million, almost half a million dollars away into our stabilization fund at the Fall Town Meeting to cover our share of those projects when they come up. Revenue assumptions for fiscal 22, the Financial Forecast Committee has met. We're going to continue to meet. Property taxes will go up 2.5%. We are level funding our state aid at our lower FY21 level right now. And again, I just can't tell you where the state's going to get the money. We will continue to meet and look at that as the state starts to put together a budget and some revenue projections, we'll get an idea. Generally, in December is when the committee meets to come up with the consensus revenue figure. That is the figure that the governor and the legislature agree to base their budgets on. And then the governor's budget comes out in mid-January. That'll be our first real look at what local aid is going to look like. But at this point, neither myself nor the committee are really comfortable with bringing that local aid number up, again, given the fact that we're using over a billion dollars in reserves this fiscal year to balance the state budget. We still kept our local receipts down a little bit. On meals tax, we think it'll be backed better than it was this year. We estimated a 50% meals tax from fiscal year 20. We've raised that back up to about 75%. We still think there's going to be some reduction in the meals tax. But again, we're, we're being very conservative in these numbers. The new growth is up to 950. Joe DeVito is very confident that we can make that number. And as I said, the Financial Forecast has already met twice. We'll continue to meet until we see some more certainty as to what those state aid numbers are going to look like going forward. This is just where we got our revenue. As you can see, 81%, 81.5% of what we bring in is through the tax levy. The rest comes from various other sources, our local receipts, state aid from the Commonwealth being the two biggest. There's your average tax bill. And your local receipts estimate versus actual. And again, we are very conservative in our revenue projections. And that will stand the town in good stead if sometime in the future the governor decides that local aid has to be cut mid-year. Having some cushion in your revenue figures allows you make it through that cut without having to come back and cut budgets. It also helps us generate our free cash, which is necessary for us to do our capital plan. So as I've said, in other capacities and other places, the budget is designed to finish in the black. And that's the way it's built, and that's the way it needs to be built for the town to operate safely from a financial standpoint. Again, the, the revenue and expenses to the pandemic are still unclear. The good news again, the vaccine is supposed to be given ready for everybody by the spring. Everybody in the country who wants a vaccine should be able to get it. But our fixed costs are up, health insurance is back up. Our collective bargaining agreements, we got a bunch of them done. We're still working on them, but those have been good. We're having a lot of delays in some of our projects because of COVID. Those delays then could drive up the cost of those projects. We are still doing all our work on our coastal storms, our coastal projects. Grants are becoming even more competitive as we've seen in the past. But we're going to keep forging ahead and hopefully we'll get some clarity as we get into the spring in terms of what's going on with the pandemic. The FY22 operating budget that you have before you is a level service budget. It does not use any free cash. It does not use any non-recurring revenues. New growth is projected to increase, and we feel pretty confident of that. State aid numbers, we are using our level from this year, which is lower than what we're actually getting. Excuse me, we still have a couple of union contracts that will be expiring at the end of this year. We have one that is currently expired. We are still working on those. The budget contains one additional position on the town side of government, and that is a 24-hour, uh, 24-hour week part-time position in the facilities department. Currently, facilities shares their administrative staff with the highway department. It is not a very good arrangement. If there's a storm, if something happens, if it's a major project, that person's timed to get sucked up in the DPW. So given, especially when you look at the capital, the amount of work that we have for facilities next year, and given what the work they have to do, they need to have some of their own clerical help. So I think it was a priority for the facilities department. It was probably my number one priority was to try to get some help to facilities this year. So there is one new part-time position currently in the budget. What you will not see in the budget, when we had discussions with the Council on Aging about their fiscal year 22 budget, they talked about their plans for the new senior center, offering lunch programs and things like that, yet they didn't put any of that in their budget. It was not included in their FY22 budget. They've submitted some of those numbers to me yesterday. So that is something we'll be looking at. How do we take advantage of this building we built and what do we need to appropriate to provide the services that we built that building to provide? But we were late getting those numbers in, so they're not right now included in what you have before you. If we update that, that'll come out to you. But as of right now, the only position is that one part-time position in the facilities department. You'll see some of our challenges. Pensions continue to go up, health insurance. We had a good year this year. Next year, we're projecting that number to be a little bit higher. Unemployment is down a little bit, debt service is up, and our general liability is up. We're projecting a small increase in the regional school assessment, but we'll get that later in the year. Again, we maintain level services, reflects operational maintenance costs for new facilities. We continue to put money into roads and fourshore protection. The capital budget is heavy in water and sewer projects. We keep up our grants with our funding for the coastal officer, and we keep pursuing grants opportunities for everything we can get our hands on. The capital budget, we did a presentation on that. People want to look at it. It is available on the website. And then what are our, you know, continuing going forward, what are our challenges? Water and sewer, we are in the process of getting ready to design a new water treatment plant. We, as Will said, we have some capital challenges in our sewer plant that we'll have to address. Pension insurance will continue to go up. Our aging infrastructure and, as the board is aware, we have a school being contemplated on the horizon, a new elementary school and renovations to a second elementary school. So we have some challenges on the horizon, but for FY22, I think we're in pretty good shape financially. The budget is in good shape, and if that additional state aid money for fiscal 22 comes through, I think we'll look to put more money, invest more money into our facilities and buy more money into our roads and seawall infrastructure as opposed to continuing to add bodies. I don't think that's where we want to go at this point. With the exception of what we might do in the Council on Aging for their additional services. So that's a real quick and dirty slideshow for you. I know you're going to dig into the, the budget, but for fiscal 21, right now, we're in good shape. Notwithstanding, we don't know what's going to happen with COVID costs after the first of the year. Fiscal 22, based on the limited information we have, the town side of the ledger is in fairly decent shape going forward from a financial standpoint.
Thank you, Mr. Bedrow, and, and of course Nancy for all your work on, on the, on the budget and on the presentation. I just wanted to note before we dive into the questions is that I really commend you guys for, personally, because of, of going with a super, with a, with a conservative budget. There's so much uncertainty. Jim and I participated in a call sort of strategizing on how to protect our, the MBTA's cuts to the South Shore earlier today. And that's just one of the realities, is they've got to plan for the worst when they're making decisions and, and I, you know, obviously, these, this presentation aligns with our current financial policies that are embedded, and I personally think that it's the, it's the smartest way to approach so much uncertainty in the coming year. So thank you for that. But does the board want to, before we go into some of the details, does the board want to?
I think Tony, the Financial Forecast Committee was unanimous in agreement on what we have currently for revenue projections, so.
Yeah. Yeah, and thank you, Tony, for serving on that committee and representing the board, representing. Tony, do you want to add any comments about the, the sort of the process and, and the, in the big picture?
Just, I can add to what Jim just said. I mean, there, there's nine of us on the committee. It includes the school, it includes, includes the assessor and, you know, anyone that has a financial impact or, or knowledge of the financial component of our model. We developed a model probably about 10 years ago. It works pretty well. There's a two-third, one-third split between the school getting two-thirds and the town getting one-third of the budget after shared expenses. And it really, there has not been a lot of debate, well, not debate, any, any sort of indecision in terms of where we should go. It's been a very good group that is thinking about it on the same lines as, as you just mentioned, to be conservative and, you know, anything that we don't spend gets put back in the town in, in terms of capital projects, so. So we are conservative by nature, and it is, it's good that the group is all working well together and, and really we're unanimous in the, in the assumptions that we made in the model.
Thank you. Anyone else on the board like to comment on Jim's presentation? No? Okay, so we, Art, we have the financial, I've got to pull my book up, hold on. All right, we got our books today. So good news for Nancy is we haven't had time to go deep into it. But we are, we are scheduled tonight to talk about several topics. The admin board of selection and advisory are the first two, so that would be tab 123. Jim, are you doing this or Nancy?
Billy, it's up to the board. Either one of us could do it. You know, your first two, you're.
Don't you do the admin and, and advisory committee review? And then Nancy will turn over to you pretty much everything else. How about that?
Madam Chair, can I ask a question about the financial forecast first before we dive in, just really quickly?
Quickly.
Quick one. Nancy or Jim or Tony, has the school bus lease line always been a shared cost?
No, that was added last year.
Okay, that looked new to me. Okay. So, so we did that in 2021, too?
It was added for 2021, and I believe we also added the streetlights to that line.
Okay. Thank you.
I just had a question.
I just, I had a question on the, you said, the, the fixed cost on the health insurance. It's like $400,000 of an increase. Is that? And this, maybe this is just my ignorance. Are we? I mean, are we wed or is there any opportunity in years to, to either shop around for another plan or anything else that might? I know years ago, we're on the, the county one. I don't want to get bogged down in this. It just seems like a huge increase. I didn't know if.
I think we're in the fourth year, Nancy, of, of being with Maya.
And we're holding a high percentage increase in our estimate with the financial forecast. Our claims experience was not as good. It's a 24-month look back, and the last 12 months have not been that great for us. So when we talked to Maya in our review, they told us that 8% was a, a good number to use for budgeting purposes. And then come January, when, so that's what Financial Forecast Incorporated, but come January, when the MMA meeting is held, they'll announce their range, and then we'll know if we're, we can then change it to the high point of that range. We'll know our actual number sometime in late February or March, but in January, we'll have a much better feel for this. So right now, that number could be higher than it actually is going to be.
Okay, great, thank you.
And really, Andrew, that's, a lot of that is driven not by the cost of health insurance going up, but the fact that we had a bad 12 months.
Right, yeah, no, I'm just trying to, yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? On that? Okay. Yeah, we'll obviously have an opportunity to look more closely. We just received the details today. But Jim, if you want to do the administration and the advisory committee, that would be great.
The, the major increases in the administration budget are in legal services and the contract bargaining line and other services, where we do have a couple of contracts out. We put some additional money in there to make sure that we have funds available to cover those. Also, my training budget is up slightly, $2,400. The line items for salaries and personnel is actually down slightly. And I think that reflects how banged it, doesn't it, Nancy? How's position?
All right, so to review the actuals for 2020, the total line item for administrative and town administrator was 758, I'm rounding, thousand dollars, proposed. And then the budget for this, for fiscal 21, it was just under 700,000. Proposed for 2022 is $720,000, which would be an increase of almost $31,000.
I think it's 730.
730 is the rec, town administrator recommended.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, wrong line, yep, wrong line. 730 is the recommended.
And really, the legal budget, fiscal 19, it was almost 100,000. Fiscal 20 was over 80. We're only budgeting 70. So we really need to get that to where we're actually spending.
Are there any questions on this? I reserve, I reserve the right to go back since we didn't have time to really dig into them. It was very.
Only one shot, one shot.
Oh, no.
I'm doing this again.
I, I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Collins.
So the department request was 719,881. The town administrator recommended was 73261. Who, who, who? If, if this is the town administrator budget, did the town administrator change his mind?
Yeah, we put in a level service budget, which would have reflected the original number.
Yeah.
And then as we go through the budgets individually, Nancy and I sit and, you know, what comes up is we're always overspending that budget.
Okay.
So the budget should reflect what we spend. So, yeah, it looks a little strange, but the directive was level service budgets, and then in discussing the budgets, those numbers are going to change.
Okay, thank you. It was a little curious, that's all.
It's just, it's just the one line. It's just contract bargaining.
And legal, Tony.
And legal.
No, legal was up, the request and the recommendation are the same.
Yeah, I'll say, yeah, the 30. Yeah, I'll say, yeah, the 30,000 through the 20 and the 30 is the contract bargaining. Correct.
That's it for me.
All right. Okay, that will bring us to tab 131, which is advisory.
And that is just the level service budget. This is actually a slight decrease in the part-time salary line because they have a new recording secretary. Aside from that, it's level funded.
Okay, so we went from a budget and actuals in 2020 of 4,800 to a budget for 21 of 60, well, $7,000. And then the recommended here is a reduction to $6,775 for the record. Back up just a quick question I forgot to ask on the, the, the recommended part-time position for DPW, we'll get to, but is that, is that a union position as a part-time position? Okay. Sorry, I just popped into my head looking at this. Okay, so Ms. Holt. On 132, we have reserve fund budget.
For the reserve fund, we're recommending that it be level funded at $75,000, the same as it was in the prior year.
Okay, and this is a fund that did not exist prior to last year?
No, it's always existed. It's only able to be accessed by the advisory committee with a vote for anything for emergency or unforeseen. So last year, we had a fire engine repair in June and they needed to have additional funds. Some years it goes untapped completely.
Right. Okay, so for 19, 20, and 21, it actually, they never drew on it. According to this.
No, they did.
We, we did draw on it, but you can't, you can't actually spend from the reserve fund. It transfers out.
Oh, I see. Okay. I'm sorry. I'm looking at the.
It's, it's, no, it is misleading from that, from that point of view.
Okay. Are there questions about?
So kind, Nancy.
And I have to look, you have to change your angle of your head because one's. Are there any questions about the reserve fund line items? Okay, seeing none, well, 130, no, 192 is general liability and property insurance.
So Financial Forecast opines on this shared cost as well, and what we recommended was a 5% increase over the prior year. And that will be until we get better information from Maya about our renewal in early spring. And we also want to be mindful of the fact that this will be the first year of the new senior center on our policy. So that we may see some type of a, a small increase for that. So we just wanted to be mindful of it.
Okay. When do we, when would that actually, do we get a binder on that? When do they, like, when they turn it over in January?
Yeah, our, our builder's risk insurance actually expires in mid-January and we'll have to renew that until they turn it over probably in February. And then we'll just have a, a small portion of it on fiscal 21 and then the full freight will find out in fiscal 22.
Okay. And presumably if we have two properties, I mean, there's small properties, the old building and the firehouse, I assume they have some insurance that will. Is that reflected in these numbers at all? I mean.
It isn't because the, the, as far as I know, the old mine at Fire Station is not insured. I believe they consider it, no, no, I believe they consider it a vacant property.
Yeah.
Won't insure it. And the, the seniors, the existing senior center wouldn't have a high value on the statement of values right now.
Okay, yeah. Are there any questions about general liability? Okay, seeing none. Then, uh, one of my personal favorites, 424, which is streetlights.
So the streetlight budget is level funded to the prior year to $125,000. As selectman, select person Karen noted, this is a shared cost for the last couple of years on the financial forecast. And this pays for the electricity for the streetlights as well as the repairs on the streetlights. So as we accept more public ways, we tend to pick up more streetlights.
Okay. The actuals are low because it's partial year?
Well, the, the fiscal year-to-date actuals would be low. The fiscal 21 is only because we're not that far in.
Yeah, that's, okay.
Yeah. It always looks great until we get through into the winter when it, it's dark from four until five.
Yes. So the actuals for 2020 were 110,000. We're budgeted 125,021 and we're recommending 125 for 2022. Okay. Any questions about streetlights?
I do.
Oh, we have questions. I knew it. Mr. Vignani.
Nancy, when we made the change, what was that, about three years ago? When we actually.
What, the change to LED lights or?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been longer than that and we finally feel like we've gotten all of the adjustments. And this is where it's going to land around this general area.
I thought we were expecting us to save money.
Yeah, I thought so too. If you look at the 2019 actuals, it was 128,000. We, we see some savings in electricity, but now we picked up the, the maintenance costs. So every time there's a light out, you know, the person down at the DPW bar and gets a phone call, she makes a list, then we have a contract company to come out with the bucket truck and start replacing the lights.
Yeah, but we knew that. We knew that when we went into it.
Yeah, but we, we didn't know to what extent that was going to cost us. Plus, we're also picking up all the, every time we pick up a street acceptance, those lights aren't always, every time there's a, a public way acceptance, my only question is, is it an ornamental light? Or is it, because those lights are so much more expensive to maintain. So there, there were, I think, costs that might not have been factored when we went through the LED process and of the purchasing of the lights. But it's, it's about the same. I mean, our budget was before 210,000, I think, for the streetlights. So to be down to 125 is, is a material change.
That's not quite what I remember, but but I thought the, the whole premise of going into it is, was it was going to save us a considerable amount of money. And it doesn't seem like it did.
Yeah, we, at, at the time, they thought that the LED conversion would really get us down to electricity costs of around 60 to 80,000 a year. And that hasn't been the case.
Okay. Thanks.
Ms. Conley?
Yes, a, a question. When we do a street acceptance now, do we pay for every single streetlight in that, on that street? Because a number of years ago, it's a very long time ago, in fact, the DPW went around town and shut off every other streetlight, leaving people who have a streetlight in front of their house. If the DPW turned it out, you're responsible to pay for the electricity if you, you happen to be the lucky person whose pole was turned off by the DPW. So my question would be, just as a matter of fairness, if we're accepting, doing street acceptances, I assume we're not paying for each, for every light?
We would be paying for every light that's currently lit. If the town decides to not light some of those, then the same policy, I believe, would still be in place. I don't know of of anyone that's actually come forward to the DPW of late and said, you know, my light's not lit, rather than out of repair and I want it lit. I haven't heard of any of those from Kevin. It's possible that there, there is a grouping of those, but we
Well.
as, as we've accepted new public ways, we've also been given the bills for those lights.
Well, then, I think that if, if people know, if, if I call town hall tomorrow and tell them, I want you to take over the light that you turned off in front of my house 20 years ago, will they assume the, the bill?
No.
So it's, it's, you know, I don't want to make a big deal out of what might, might seem like a pet personal peeve, but if I'm paying $18 a month to have my streetlight, and it's actually, it's, it's out right now, so I do have to call the town. But why wouldn't we adopt the same policy if we're accepting new streets that we only pay for every other light?
Well, I would hope that the new streets that are being planned would not have as many lights on them from the planning board's approval process. So we wouldn't have to pay for as many. Our lights are basically supposed to be places where there are traffic issues, intersections and places like that. Not the only town that did it, but as Nancy said, I've got, since I'm here for three years, I haven't got any complaints with people. Streetlights have been shut off. I get complaints with people's streetlights are broken. So.
Yeah.
There we go.
I wish someone would come take care of the streetlight in front of my house because it bothers me.
You've got to know a couple of people. Okay. Are there any additional questions about streetlights? We could, we could definitely talk about this all night, but.
No. No, we couldn't.
No, I, I, I'm happy to hear that. I did not know that history and, um, you know, right now I'm the liaison to traffic rules and rights and we just approved a new street and we never discussed the, the, the light. So it would be interesting to see what the planning board regs are. So we'll look back. Good homework.
Probably every 20, 25 years or so, a town will get a real bad budget crisis and they'll start shutting off streetlights.
Right.
Okay. Thank you for being so conservative because we really don't want to be that board that does that, okay?
No, if you're paying for the streetlight, you're going to continue paying for the streetlight.
So now to less, less entertaining conversation is 912, which is workers' compensation budget line.
So again, this is one that Financial Forecast is on and they recommended level funding workers' comp for $210,000. We are self-insured for our workers' comp claims. Several years in a row that we've had high claims. It's a little bit better this year. So we're hoping to rebuild the trust fund. So right at the end of June, it was $450,000 in the trust fund. We had set a goal several years ago, probably during the prior town administrator's tenure of 750,000 and we were getting really close to that. But because of this poor experience of the last few years, we have eaten into our trust fund, which goes to demonstrate the need to have a reasonable reserve balance in case you have a bad claims history.
Okay, so, yeah, so the balance, I'm sorry, I'm reading sideways here, is around 450 now?
Yes, we just put 210,000 into it in July 1st, but I would expect it'll finish somewhere between 450 and 500 at the end of this fiscal year, barring.
Yeah. Okay. Are there any board questions regarding the workers' comp proposed budget? Okay. Then the final is 913, which is the unemployment budget.
Okay, so we significantly increased our unemployment budget for fiscal 21, knowing that because of the pandemic, there would be higher than normal claims. We are doing very well so far this year. We have had higher than normal claims. We did need to increase that budget, but we are still operating within our budget. But for fiscal 22, Financial Forecast took a look at it and they thought that, yes, it should be higher because we don't know what the lasting effects of the pandemic are going to be on the economy. But a lot of the people who would have had benefits are going to time out of benefits. So what we ended up doing was doubling it from a normal year. So normally we carry a $65,000 budget. Instead, we're carrying a $130,000 budget, so twice as much as we normally have, but less than what we had for fiscal 21, which was really the unknown impact year of COVID-19 unemployment.
Okay. Great. Are there questions from the board on the unemployment insurance? Yeah. Great. Well, that is all that we have on our agenda for review tonight. You will note at the beginning of your big binder that we received today, and thank you to everybody that put this together. I know it's, it's a lot of heavy lifting. You will, we have a calendar at the beginning of it, which shows what will be upcoming for our review. So we will have time to dive into those ahead of time. And just so the public knows, this is the start of the process. We will meet with each department chair over several months and the final vote of all projects and articles will be in the beginning of March as part of the process. So before we move on, I will just throw it out there if there's any questions from anyone participa- participating in this Zoom that would have a question about the budget items that we just reviewed. You can raise your hand under participants. I see none. Does the board have any other comments or questions about these articles before we move on?
Nope. Just thank you to Jim and the team. It's always a great book and a lot of great information. Nancy, can you send me the financial forecast in a, whatever the Excel spreadsheet? But I was. I want to include it in one of my meetings, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this topic? Nope. Okay. Mr. Goodrich, did I step on you?
Just say thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, great. So now we come to our favorite part of the evening, which is, do we, we have, we've started the process of review and discussion of financial policies. And it is 918 by my count. And Ms. Holt has graciously said that if we are, we're, we want to go on, that we can, we can table this conversation, but, or we can take another. We left off, tell me, Nancy, remind us where we left off on? Let's see.
We reviewed budget and we would go back, circle back and go through the budget amendments and then we would move on to look at revenue. But we don't have to. Like I said, it's not going anywhere, so we have time.
Okay. Does the board feel inclined to go through the budget policy suggested changes? We've already talked about the high-level stuff. Or do we want to go on? We've got to cover warrant, license renewals, and we need to review and vote on appointments. Oh, and we still have executive session. Totally forgot that.
Let's pass.
I, I was just about to recommend, I forgot about executive session. So Nancy, we will revisit this next week. Are you disappointed?
I'm heartbroken, but I'll get over it.
Okay.
Looking forward to fund with financial policies.
I, you know, love that stuff. Okay, so we will, we will postpone that and appreciate your flexibility on that matter, which will bring us to a discussion vote of the annual, the April 12, 2021 Annual and Special Town Meeting Warrant. So this is the required for us by, is it statute, Jim?
Well, we set the town meeting date by our, by our charter, our bylaws, and then you back off from the town meeting date when you open and close the warrant. So it's not a statutory requirement, but in order to get the warrant open, get it closed and have all the hearings on the warrant articles, you got to open it early.
Yeah. And how long do we have to close it? How long does it normally?
How long do we keep it open for?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. Next meeting, two weeks.
So just for two weeks. Okay. Great. Okay. Does anyone? Sorry, comments?
Yes.
A motion, please. If, oh, are you waving? Are you saying goodbye? Bye, Will. I didn't know if he wanted to talk about warrants. Okay, yes, if there's no discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to the Board of Selectmen. And first of all, shouldn't we be saying moved at the select board?
So I guess technically we have.
Official yet?
I don't think we have gotten the blessing from the Attorney General, so.
Oh, okay. Okey-dokey. Just wanted to ask.
Correct. That's the correct language.
Moves at the Board of Selectmen, open the warrant for the Spring Annual and Special Town Meeting to be held on April 12, 2021.
Moved by Ms. Curran. Is there a second?
Okay.
Second by Mr. Vignani. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Thank you very much. The motion carries 5-0. We now move on to annual 2021 license renewals. There are a great deal of them. Are we going to? Do we have suggested motions? And if so, can I implore that our clerk take on this responsibility?
Sure.
Or does anyone, I'm sorry, I should, before we go to that, are there any comments, questions, or concerns about the list? So it includes the alcohol licenses, malt, malt and wine licenses, retail package stores. Wine, yeah, for both. All alcohol licenses, common vic licenses, entertainment, class two, class three, sewage disposal. sewage disposal, and, uh, bowling alley. What is theirs? The, I guess it's a separate bowling alley license. Um, and one for the innkeepers as well. Are there any questions or concerns about this list? We received obviously all the backup on this. These are routine. Yes, Ms. Curran?
Sorry, I just have a question about the VFW issue. I mean, I, I understand the hardship completely, but does it, does it make sense to award a license without having proof of liability insurance, workman's comp? And I, I'm not so concerned about the license fee, if that's where their hardship is, but I'm a little concerned about the other insurances. I don't know.
They have informed us that they're, they want to renew their license, but they're not going to operate because they really can't with the pandemic. So they will not be able to operate and open their establishment until they provide those things to us.
Yeah. Okay.
And it's, it's a bar, basically, and there's no bars operating right now under the COVID guidelines.
No, I, I know what it is. I just, I.
So I, I understand you can serve, but they won't be able to serve alcohol until we have those things.
Okay.
And how, how do you know that? I mean, how do we enforce that? Just, I don't.
We'll just have to keep an eye on it. You know, I mean, you start seeing, we drive by all the time, it's right near the police station. You start seeing cars congregating there, I mean, someone's inside doing something. And as Lorraine said, there's, it's a bar. I mean, there's not a whole lot to do there to help their meetings, but, uh, we'll just have to keep an eye on it. And I think for the most part, they're, they're true to their word. They're not going to start operating, uh, without that stuff because they're more at risk for operating without that, uh, without their insurance and stuff than we are, so.
Then we are of giving them a license without proof of all that? Okay.
And we have Jerry O'Brien, who is the alcohol enforcement officer, who will be checking in as well. Okey-dokey.
Good question. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Curran, Ms. Conley?
Yes. Well, then I would wonder, I mean, can't we just grant the license when they're ready?
No, because it will expire at the end of the year, so they'd have to get a new license. And that's a whole different process.
Doing this process, we're following the ABCC and Governor Baker's COVID guidelines, the way we're doing it right now.
All right. Not going to fight.
No, good questions.
Okay.
Any other concerns or questions?
Nope. Thanks.
Okay. So, hm, Ms. Conley?
Yes, so, um, I.
While we read them, can we, Lorraine, can we just say as printed?
I was just gonna, yeah.
Well, we never have in the past, but, you know, whatever.
I'll, I'll read, I'll read fast. Want me to go ahead?
Tony's eyebrows are still up, so that means he's still thinking.
Well, I don't know. Lorraine, can we do it that way or no?
I mean, I, I, I'd have to check with legal. I mean, we've never done it that way in the past. I, I don't know the answer to that.
I think it's cleaner just to read.
I'll just do it.
That's fine.
I think for pub, yeah, public record, I think we probably, lawyers would tell us we should do it, so.
You don't, you don't have to move each individual license separately.
No, let's do category.
Yeah, so you want me to just read the motion for the category and then read the names under it?
Then read the name, then go to the next category, right?
Yep, yep.
Just says Lorraine has it all laid out.
So one roll call vote at the end.
Yep. Right?
We can do one roll, uh, I have no objection to one roll call vote at the end.
I think one roll call vote, but somebody has to second the motion for each category.
Okay. We can do that. All right. Ms. Conley, go. Okay.
I have a question.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Curran.
Are you going to have to abstain for a part of that, though? So just.
Yes. So I will, when I vote, I will, I will give my vote and then abstain from those that I am abstaining.
Okay.
Is that okay, Lorraine? You can.
Yeah, I already know which two.
Okay. All right, good. All right, we got the rule?
Ready, set, go. All right. Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to review, renew the following restaurant, all alcohol licenses for twenty-twenty-one. Hibernian Tavern, Mill Wharf Restaurant, O'Callaghan's Doing Business as the Voyage, Oral Restaurant, Riverside, Salt Society, Situette Tavern, The Barker Tavern, The River Club, The North River Grill, The Galley, TK O'Malley Sports Cafe.
Second.
Second by Mr. Goodrich.
Okay. Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following restaurant wine and malt licenses for twenty-twenty-one. Untold Brewing, Cosmos Cafe.
Second.
Second by Mr. Goodrich.
Excuse me, can you ju, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, but you need to do unanimous vote, yes or no for each category. All in favor of the first category.
Do a roll call for every one.
No, we'll do the roll call at the end, but the unanimous vote I need because Karen's going to be abstaining on some.
Yeah, but if we're going to do them by category, don't they have to be roll call?
No, that's not how we did it last meeting.
Oh, I see. Okay, I see what you're saying. So on the first one, which is the all alcohol license, um, do we?
Motion by Karen Conley, second by Andrew Goodrich, and then you say all in favor.
Yep, all in favor.
Aye.
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 Okay. And the second was on malt and wine licenses. Ms. Conley moved and Mr. Goodrich seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, five zero. Okay, retail package.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following retail package store, all alcohol licenses for twenty-twenty-one. Harborside Wines and Spirits, Green Bush Package Store, Situette Package Store, Ward one four three.
Moved by Ms. Conley, second by Mr. Goodrich. All in favor say aye, aye. All opposed? No. Ayes have it, five zero.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following retail package store wine and malt licenses for twenty-twenty-one. Seven-Eleven, Malaney's Fish Market, O'Callaghan's Package Store LLC, Sand Hills General Store, The Village Market.
Second.
Second by Mr. Goodrich, um, all in favor, aye.
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 No, no. Okay. Next.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following club, all alcohol licenses for twenty-twenty-one. Hathley Country Club, Situette VFW Post, Situette Country Club, Situette Harbor Yacht Club.
Moved by Ms. Conley, second by Mr. Goodrich. I will abstain from the Hathley Country Club and Situette Harbor Yacht Club. All in favor of the four, uh, say, of the other, well, I guess of the other two.
I'll abstain from Situette Country Club.
Oh, great. So, okay, so all in favor of the Situette, uh, F, uh, VFW Post, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. All in favor of the, uh, Hathley Country Club and Situette Yacht Club? Aye.
Aye.
All abstain, all in favor of the Situette Country Club, say aye, aye.
Aye.
And Mr. Vignani is abstaining, so you got that, Lorraine?
I do. I have it all.
All right.
Move that the, move that the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following club, wine and malt licenses for twenty-twenty-one. Situette Racket and Fitness.
Seconded by Mr. Goodrich. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed? Aye, five zero.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following common victualer licenses for twenty-twenty-one. Seven-Eleven, Cosmos Cafe, Cersei's Grotto, Coffee Corner, Dad's Place, Harborside Wine and Spirits, Harbor House of Pizza, Hathley Country Club, Hennessy News, Lucky Finn Cafe, Maria's Subs and Pizzas, Mary Lou's News, Milano's Pizzeria, Malaney's Fish Market, O'Callaghan's Doing Business as the Voyage, Oral Restaurant, Quench Juicery, Green Bush Package Store, Riverside, Green Bush General Store, Sand Hills General Store, Situette Tavern, Situette VFW Post three one six nine, Situette Country Club, Situette Harbor Yacht Club, Situette Package Store, Situette Racket and Fitness, The Barker Tavern.
All right, we're moving.
The Mill Wharf, I'm sorry, next page.
Sorry.
The Mill Wharf, The River Club, The Village Market, TK O'Malley's, Untold Brewing.
Great. So removing Hathley, oh, wait, okay, yes. Second by Mr. Goodrich, removing Hathley Country Club, Situette Country Club and the Situette Harbor Yacht Club. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's five zero. Um, all in favor of Hathley Country Club and how, Situette Harbor Yacht Club, aye?
Aye.
Aye, I abstain, four one. And then all in favor of Situette Country Club, uh, say aye?
Aye.
I abstain. Uh, it's four one on, on that as well. Okay, entertainment licenses.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following entertainment licenses for twenty-twenty-one. Galley, Hathley Country Club, Lucky Finn Cafe, O'Callaghan's Doing Business as the Voyage, Riverside, Situette VFW, Situette Country Club, Situette Harbor Yacht Club, The Barker Tavern, The Mill Wharf, The River Club, TK O'Malley's and Untold Brewing.
Second.
Okay, second by Mr., uh, Mr. Goodrich, uh, removing, again, Hathley Country Club, Situette Country Club and the Yacht Club. All in favor? Aye, aye, that's five zero. For the Situette Country Club, uh, we'll just, I got out of order. Situette Country Club, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Mention, uh, four one. And the Situette Harbor Yacht Club and Hathley Country Club, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mention four one. Okay, class two licenses.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following class two licenses for twenty-twenty-one. Seacrest Auto, Situette Shell, Inc.
Moved by Ms. Conley, seconded by Ms.
Second.
Come on. No, Ms. Curran got that. Seconded by Ms. Curran.
Got it, nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero, opposed, ayes have it, licensed, third, class three licenses?
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following class three licenses for twenty-twenty-one. Ray's Repair Shop and Ryan Allen LLC.
Seconded by Mr. Goodrich.
I'll second.
Ms. Curran. Any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, ayes have it, uh, septic disposal.
Move that the Port of Selectmen vote to renew the following septic disposal licenses for twenty-twenty-one. Alltown Inc., PF Spencer, Ronaby Inc., doing business as KR Anderson Pumping Co- Company, Rosano Davis Sanitary Pumping, Spirito Environmental Services.
A move by Ms. Conley, seconded by
Second.
Mr. Goodrich, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero and.
Move that the Port of Selectmen vote to renew the bowling license for twenty-twenty-one to Situette Bowlway.
Moved by Ms. Conley, second by Mr. Goodrich. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye, aye.
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 Opposed, none seen, uh, five zero. And last, is that last?
Move, move, yes, move that the Port of Selectmen vote to renew the innkeeper's license for twenty-twenty-one for the inn at Situette Harbor.
Moved by Ms. Conley, seconded by Mr. Goodrich. Um, any, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, five, five zero. Okay.
Okay.
Now, are you saying, Lorraine, that we did that and that was like a fliminy and we have to still do?
We have more to do for, uh, the next meeting. Is that what you mean?
Sorry?
More, we have more renewals for the next meeting to approve, yes.
No, I just want to make sure we did that. Okay.
Yeah, this is fine. I'll do a roll call vote.
Okay.
Can, Ms. Canfield?
I accept where abstained.
Right. Um, Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Okay. And I just wanted to add that this is a huge effort that many town departments support and help with. Uh, Situette Fire Department for doing all of the inspections for every single one of these businesses, especially Al Elliott, Neil Duggan in the Building Department, who inspects every single one of these locations annually, the Treasurer Collector's Office to help us make sure everybody's paid their taxes, the Board of Health for making sure everybody has all their food permits and everything, and Allison Richmond, who I could not do this without. So thank you.
Thank you all.
It's a big interdepartmental effort.
Yes.
Thank you all. Yes. We appreciate it. Um, and the town.
Lots of good compliments today for our town staff, so.
Yeah. As Jim noted, great. Okay, so that leaves us on to, uh, session vote of our boards and appointments. Cultural Council, uh, a candidate did not withdrew her, uh, application. So I don't think there's anyone else on there, is there, Lorraine?
We're all set with everybody else on Cultural Council for now.
Okay. So that brings us to Veteran Services Council. We have one, it's, uh, number thirty-five. Sorry, I had to stand up for this. Uh, we have one opening and we have the applicant from Mr. Robert McLean. I thought he's phenomenal personally. Is there anyone that would like to comment or, or I would entertain a motion?
Um, I'll, I'll make a motion. I thought he was great. Move to appoint Robert McLean to the Veteran Services Advisory Council for a term of three years, where until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Online Training Program is completed within thirty days.
Moved by Ms.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Conley. And yeah, I thought he was a no-brainer in my mind. He was just, he's going to be great. So, roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Thank you and welcome to the board. Uh, now we have a hard one. Uh, we have three excellent candidates that have come forward for the town employee position on the Advisory Committee on Equity and Justice for All. Um, I think this is akin to the same conversation we had, um, when we were populating the committee that it's kind of hard to pick anyone wrong because they're all strong candidates and they all offer something. Um, I don't know if the board would like to make comments about this. It, it, I honestly don't think we can go wrong and each of them has a strength. Would anyone like to, um, Marge, do you want to give an overview, just sort of, you know, where we are in the, I guess it doesn't matter. We all know where we are on the board, but does anyone like to comment? Sorry, it's getting late.
No, I agree with you. I thought they, they were all great. I'm really glad we saw some folks come forward, um, after we sent out that message. That was terrific. I, I think, um, Lucia, um, provides a great perspective, especially being new and, and being, um, a minority as well and all of the other attributes that she mentioned. So, um, I would really rally behind, um, her as a candidate. So I think her energy was amazing as well. And, um, and I know that Jody and Linda will provide any additional support, um, if asked because they're both, you know, terrific people and employees as well. That's where my head is at.
Yeah, I, I actually tend to agree with you because I think that they all are, are contributors and it's a win. It's a win since they've, you know, Linda and Jody both are indicating they're going to, they're not going far. So, um, I thought Lucio was great and she, she really, she, I've gotten to know her just a little bit, um, in DPW office. And she's just, I don't think there's anybody that walks in that isn't a walkout or friend. So she's just got a great, a great approach to dealing with people. And this can be, this committee is going to need that kind of element, I think, because it's going to be some heavy lifting. Are there any other comments on, on this and?
Totally, I absolutely agree. I mean, as, as Ms. Curran said, it is, the energy that she had, it was just, it's infectious. But you're, but you're right, I mean, Jody, her perspective is wonderful, but that, that energy is just so, I think, needed and I love the perspective, so, um, that should be wonderful.
Okay. Um, then if there's any, would somebody like to make a motion?
Sure. Uh, move to appoint Lucia Silbera, and I hope I pronounced her last name properly. Did I pronounce that right, Jim and Lorraine?
Yes, yep.
Okay, great. Uh, to the Advisory Committee for Equity and Justice for All to represent Situette town staff as a non-voting member for two years or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Online Training Program is completed within thirty days.
Moved by Ms. Curran, seconded by Mr.
Second.
And well, we got it, we got a second and a third, um, then, uh, we will go to a roll call vote.
Who was the second or the third? I mean, who was the second?
That is Mr. Vignani.
Okay. Uh, roll call vote, um, Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
All right, the motion carries three, three, uh, five zero. Um, thank you to everybody and, and we will take you up on your offer to be, um, supported and we appreciate your efforts.
Madam Chairman, I just, I know I've been asked, so now that we have this, uh, committee set up, I know Lorraine will share all their emails, um, with us, so I can send out an email and determine a date that works for all to, to meet and, uh, kick this off.
That sounds great. I'm excited. Great, okay. We have two more committees to appoint. Widows Walk is next, which is tab number thirty-nine. And we have two openings on the committee. And Brad Crozier and Maria Monaco were interviewed this evening. There are no other applicants for this position. I thought they, I thought they both had, we, I think we covered it in their interviews. Brad's got the marketing expertise. Maria's got, you know, they're both golfers and Maria has interior design, which is pretty timely given where we are in that project. So I felt pretty good about those two. Any other comments?
I thought they were both great.
Thought they were both great.
All right, is there a motion then?
I don't have their last names, or I would.
Brad Crozier, and I know I'm butchering it, I apologize, Brad, and Maria.
Maria Monaco.
Move to appoint Maria Monaco and Brad Crozier to the Widows Walk Committee for a term of two years or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Online Training Program is completed within thirty days.
Move by Ms. Curran, seconded by Mr. Vignani. Any further discussion? Seeing none, you're getting competitive people. Roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
And to round out, we have the Sousi En Brie, which is, we, because we increased the members to twelve, we have now four openings and three candidates, two of whom were recruited personally by the current chair and one of whom has been involved in the, I, I assume she probably was recruited too, she just didn't mention it. They've all been involved in the program and all they just have excellent connection to this committee. So if there's no person that would like to add a comment, we'll do a motion. Sorry, I'm losing it, guys, it's
Move to appoint Suzanne Horgan, Lynn Ferrara, and Kate Logar to the Sousi En Brie Committee. Is it again the same terms, three years?
Yes.
Okay. For, for a term of three years or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Online Training Program is completed within thirty days.
Move by Ms. Conley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Oh, yeah.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Great, thank you. That concludes our new business for the evening. As I've read fast and brings us to other business before we go into executive session. So I would ask the board, does anyone have a liaison report this evening that they'd like to share? Everyone's staring, so I'm thinking, no.
We reviewed all of the financial forecast meeting earlier, so no report.
Okay.
And Jim stole my thunder about the Lawson Green tour, so no, no report there either.
And luckily, we're all, oh, no, I did have one thing. I just, I just, from the library, the CPC, there's a CPC application, I believe, is in for doing the phase of the outdoor garden. So that, I don't know if you recall that, that's still in the works and, and actually the foundation has really taken the lead on that. And I guess Ginny did mention that. Any other liaison reports? Okay. Correspondence, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we received correspondence from Comcast announcing their price changes and everyone will get the notification in their cable bills. And it's way too confusing to even try to explain what they're doing. But, so we did receive that and I think it's just a matter of they have to send it to the town. We also received a piece of correspondence from Representative Stephen Lynch regarding the proposed MBTA service reductions. And he was explaining in the letter that he's working on behalf of the town through the federal budget process. So, and he did suggest that we might, that MBTA might want to have an outdoor meeting in Situette to talk about the
Enter your meeting ID.
Uh-oh. But at any rate, so that's from Stephen Lynch and that was it.
That was it, great. Okay, I will note, there may be, Jim and I were on that MBTA call today and the public hearings are, are, are fast and furious right now and the, the sort of regional efforts really getting attention to maybe not totally eliminate the ferry or reduce the, the Green Bush line. So those works, those actions have been very helpful. And there may be an opportunity to do something locally this week that's in the works, but it hasn't been figured out yet, so keep, stay tuned. Yes, Ms. Conley?
Yes, I have a question about that. Are any of the other meetings being held in any of the other service areas being held in person? Or are they all being done virtually or is it a mixed bag?
As far as I know, they're all virtual.
As all virtual, yep.
Yeah.
But they've been very, they've been very open to the public comment, so.
Yeah, no, the reason I ask is because Representative Lynch did mention in his letter that he thought maybe Situette would want an in-person meeting at the football field, so I just thought I'd ask.
I wrote, I did send a letter back, I think I sent a copy to you guys, to that letter saying that we appreciated his support and efforts on advocacy and our part and, you know, let us know, we'll figure it out if he, you know, if he thinks it can be useful and he can, it will help, you know, honestly, if it'll just help his cause at the federal level, we'll figure it out, so. Waiting to, have not heard back from him yet. So, all right, any other comments on correspondence or liaison? If not, I will accept a motion to, to accept the meeting minutes from prior meetings unless there are changes or comments to them. Any changes and comments?
None.
Would someone like to make a motion?
Move to accept the meeting minutes for the Board of Selectmen meetings held on November sixteenth, twenty twenty, and November seventeenth, twenty twenty.
Move by Ms. Conley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran, no further discussion, there'll be a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr., Ms. Curran?
Yes.
And Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Okay, I got to find the, all right. The last item on our open agenda is to adjourn to executive session and to remind the board that since we're meeting remotely, to make sure that any documents that need to be signed are signed tomorrow if possible. So that will conclude our agenda for this evening and I, aren't I supposed to say something? I have to?
I'm sorry, first we need to have a motion to adjourn the meeting at nine fifty and then we need to make the motion to move into executive session.
Okay, thank you, Lorraine, so do I have a motion?
Move to adjourn the meeting at nine fifty.
Move by Mr. Vignani, seconded by
Second.